Chip Barnett. And up here at the top, you can see this is the vaccination by for people who have self declared white. Red indicates a lower vaccination, green indicates a higher vaccination. And you can see the the areas that we have pointed out below that have poor vaccination. Continue to have, but generally in the city of Charlottesville and surrounding area, there's been pretty good uptake. Here on this lower map, this is the vaccination for individuals who self declared black or African American. And you can see that there are certainly a number of areas where the vaccination rate is not where we would like it to be. But there are areas where we actually have a higher vaccination rate among blacks or African Americans. Then we see in the white population. And areas where it's just not great in either that we continue to work on and try and get out. To provide easy access to vaccination. Overall, in the city of Charlottesville, you'll see that just about fifty five percent of individuals. Who self declared black have been vaccinated. For whites, that's sixty seven, and it's higher in all other ethnic and racial groups at this point in time. As I said, our community vaccination center continues to remain open. It's in the old Big Lots building. And so if you go to vaccines.gov, you can find it by looking under the Charlottesville Old Big Lots CDC. They have all three vaccinations available, all the doses, all ages. You can walk in now if you have a five to eleven year old. And want to get them vaccinated. Translation services are available. So if English is not your main language and you prefer to get your health information in another language, they can assist you with that. And as I said, they're open Monday through Saturday, ten AM to eight PM. So it's a really great service. Everyone that I know that's been through, they says it's really fast and they do a great job. So I really encourage people to go there. We do continue to offer testing in the area and all of the usual places and at the usual times Wednesday and Thursday. I do want to point out that there is considerable to a number of hours available for testing using the next molecular. They're a private company that we have contracted with through our central office to come and offer testing. That's at the JCPenney lot. And then Friday, we're there from four thirty to six thirty. And of course, UVA continues to provide its testing at Church of Incarnation. And Mount Zion First African Baptist Church. And I really want to call out both of those religious organizations. They've been incredibly gracious to allow testing to occur there for months on end. Really, it's been a great service to the community and I just want to thank them for their service. It's, we couldn't have done it without them. And of course, our hotline remains open. And you can search for other places to get vaccines at vaccines.gov. That's really the bulk of, and I'll stop sharing now, bulk of information I have. I know there are lots of questions about the Omicron variant. And I wish I had some more definitive answers. But at this point in time, we're really just trying to determine its transmissive, transmissibility, its severity of disease. Who we think it's going to impact. And I would just emphasize again that the best thing that you can do right now is if you haven't been vaccinated, please start your vaccination series. If it's been more than six months and you haven't gotten your booster, please go get your booster. Everyone over the age of eighteen is eligible for a booster at this point in time. And then finally, remember that the basic wearing your mask, keeping your distance, washing your hands are really great ways to keep yourself and your family safe. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
I think you touched on it, but that eighteen to twenty four range, I feel like at another meeting, you might have shared about the impact that UVA students might have in that number and where they report their vaccinations. Like, could you just elaborate on that again?
Yeah, so we, what we've, you you notice that some of the worst census tracts are centered right around the university. And that's where there's a lot of student housing. And we think part of the problem is for us, we use census numbers for the denominator of age groups. And part of the problem is that the census is very clear on instructing you to use where you live at at the moment of the census. And it happens when students are in school. So we have lots of eighteen to twenty four year olds in those census tracts. But when they got vaccinated, I'm, I, I, there's no easy way for me to confirm it, but I'm pretty sure that what they did is put their home address. Because that's what my eighteen to twenty four year old did when she got vaccinated is gave her home address. And so it's probably a little falsely low. That being said, there are probably areas that we can continue to get buy into the vaccine and that. So and there are plenty of other areas that we're working on. Where we don't think it's a student, we think we just have a lot of vaccine hesitancy. So.
And the five to eleven, are you seeing any challenges with that age group who's getting vaccinated and who is not, or is it just right now supply?
Right now, anybody can get vaccinated. If you have a five to eleven year old, supply is not an issue any longer. It's, it's really just getting the kids vaccinated. So we are, as I talked about the last one, we've been doing a lot of outreach at schools. And then particular neighborhoods where we think access to other vaccination might be challenging. So we have drive through events in the schools. We usually start those at four in the afternoon. We're doing that way because we think parents for this particular vaccine would like to be present when their kid gets it. But we make it very easy. We do it through the cars. The couple of parents that I've talked to that have taken their kids through, so it's been really smooth and painless. We have gone to places like West Haven and Friendship Court. We have other outreach events at places like U-Haul, places where we know that it might be more of a challenge to get those kids to a vaccination center. So we'll continue to do that outreach effort. We have had a number of big events at Charlottesville High School. We had just finished up a second shot one last weekend. I, I think getting fifty percent of the kids vaccinated in this area in the relatively short amount of time is, is great. We're having considerably more challenges and much lower uptake in some of the more rural localities. So I really applaud the Charlottesville parents for embracing vaccination.
And I'll just give a shout out to your main location because I brought three kids there through three to two different times and it was so easy. And the staff was so friendly and just really accommodating to them. And so parents that are out there that haven't done it yet, it's just, it's a pretty seamless process and the kids really enjoyed drawing something and putting it on the wall and going back and seeing it the second time through. So thank you to all the staff that and volunteers that have engaged in that process.
I'll be sure and pass that along. I know they work really hard to make it child friendly. So.
So you believe that the rate for the twelve year olds that bracket that you will just given enough time, you'll see similar results? Or are there areas or I mean demographics in the city that you're concerned about? Like who's getting vaccinated? Who is making up that fifty percent?
Yeah, so it's actually a pretty, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't put that split that age group out by race and ethnicity, but I can. I will say that the people that were vaccinated at the health department. It's been a broad mixture. We're getting lots of kids from all different groups taking it up. I think the community vaccination center, when you look at those vaccination, it's more skewed towards the white population. Which is not unexpected. You have to, I, I, you have to take your kid there, make an appointment up until this last week, you had to make an appointment. But I think for health departments events, because we're trying to get out to neighborhoods and make this as easy as possible. We're really having a great uptake overall. So.
I think my thought is that based on the next age group that a parent, and I know they're the younger kids, but it would seem that those numbers should be similar. So I guess in a, the next time you give an update, they should be on their way to maybe closing a gap.
Yeah, I think that we'll continue to see that gap. A lot longer to really focus on that twelve to fifteen year old age group that we have on the five to eleven. I, I think there may be, you know, some parents who have the younger kids may have more hesitancy. I, I, I don't know. I, I haven't seen a lot of vaccine hesitancy in the Charlottesville parents I've talked to. They've, they've all seemed to have embraced it. The kids do really well. We were just talking earlier with a staff member who has a number of kids in this age group and he said they were all fine. They didn't have any problems at all. So I, I think they do well with it. We try and make it as kid friendly as possible. We will continue to do outreach in all of the areas that we did outreach for that twelve to fifteen year old age group. We are hampered a tiny bit by the holiday season. You know, we, we didn't, we did some, but not a lot of vaccination in the Thanksgiving week. And the week of Christmas, again, there'll be some, but not a lot of vaccination. But we'll, we'll continue to work hard to get these kids vaccinated.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. I'm sure staff will be reaching out to make sure there's a twenty twenty two schedule and appreciate the time that you, the updates that you've shared with council and hopefully things are not so stark in twenty twenty two, but I am concerned about what I'm reading about this variant, but understanding that we have to wait for more information.
Right. I, I'm just going to take this to remind everybody that you do have actions that you can take right now that will help keep you and your loved ones safe. So again, if you haven't been vaccinated, please use this as an opportunity to get vaccinated. So. And thank you. I'm always happy to come and update the council on where we stand with this or any other health department activity.
But I think we also should continue the hand washing, the social distancing, physical distancing. The cleaning your spaces like, and you know, and I think we need to put the community on alert that some other countries have had to take more restrictive measures again because of the increase in transmission. And so I hope that if it comes a time where we have to do those things, that we're open to doing them, even if at the state level, they haven't made those decisions yet.
Absolutely. The, the, the three, your three main stalwarts are wearing your mask, keeping your physical distance. And of course, good hand hygiene, washing those hands frequently. And you know, that'll help for flu as well, which we are in the middle of right now. So you get double benefit.
All right. Well, thank you. And we'll see you in January. All right. Next up, are there any recognitions? Ms. Thomas, the consent agenda, would you read it, please?
Consent agenda, one minute. October eighteenth work session, closed meeting and regular meeting. November first, regular meeting, November fifth, special meeting, November thirtieth, emergency special meeting. Number two, resolution appropriating Department of Conservation and Recreation recreational trail grant funds for construction of Meadow Creek Bridges, two hundred twenty two thousand five hundred eleven dollars and twenty one cents, second reading. Three, resolution appropriating reimbursement received in connection with the Charlottesville Circuit Court renovation and addition project. Six thousand six hundred forty three dollars, second reading. Four, resolution appropriating funds for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Twenty three thousand two hundred eighty four dollars, second reading. Five, resolution appropriating contribution from Charlottesville City Schools to the school small cap funded program for school security projects, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, second reading. Six, resolution appropriating funds for Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act Grant. Four hundred fifty two thousand seven hundred four dollars, second reading. Seven, resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan Funds from the Commonwealth for utility bill assistance, three hundred fifty nine thousand eight hundred seventy nine dollars, thirty cents, second reading. Eight, resolution appropriating Bama Works Funds for Escape Park Lighting, one hundred thousand dollars, second reading. Nine, ordinance amending and reordaining Charlottesville City Code Chapter fourteen licenses. Section fourteen dash twenty four, tax incentives for technology businesses to extend the eligibility period for five years to December thirty first, twenty twenty six, second reading. Ten, ordinance amending the Charlottesville Albemarle, excuse me. Sorry about that. Number ten, ordinance amending the Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau Agreement, second reading. Eleven, resolution appropriating funds from progressive and national general insurance companies for loss associated with city of Charlottesville traffic assets. Seventeen thousand four hundred forty eight dollars, forty seven cents, first of two readings. Twelve, resolution appropriating funds for Virginia Department of Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Program for bicycle and pedestrian improvements at Preston Avenue and Harris Street. Two hundred forty five thousand seven hundred twenty five dollars, first of two readings. Thirteen, resolution appropriating funds for the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Grant. Stormwater Management Model of Morris Creek Watershed, three hundred seven thousand dollars, first of two readings. Fourteen, resolution appropriating twenty twenty Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. Seven thousand five hundred dollars, first of two readings. Fifteen, resolution transferring funds, funds from the Facilities Repair Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund Program Fund. Ninety thousand dollars, one reading. Sixteen, resolution approving participation in the Virginia opioid litigation settlement. A, resolution approving participation in the proposed settlement of opioid related claims against McKesson Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, Jansen, and their related corporate entities, one reading. B, resolution approving participation in the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and approving the city's execution of the Virginia Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding, one reading.
Right. Thank you. Counselors, are there any questions? Comments?
The two of the items had had some slight amendments to them and were reposted this morning based on some feedback from Counselor Snook. So again, thank you, Counselor Snook, for catching those and for stuff for responding. And again, there were just some minor changes.
Do you want to just highlight the?
It was to number nine, the amending and reordaining the Charlottesville City Code Chapter fourteen. Licenses and tax incentives for technology businesses. And then number ten, amending the Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau Agreement.
And they were basically in the nature of typos. Nothing substantive.
Yeah, but I think once you say that, I mean, I knew that, but yeah. So the email that we just received on quite on items four, five, and six, I think item five. It, there wasn't any detailed information about what it will be used for, but this is the schools sending money to the city, that the city because of how the small cap projects work will then do some of the work for the schools, correct? And so just want to make sure that for Kay's Fraily's email that she, we are not sending money to, we are not, this is not city money being allocated. The schools have requested something and then sent it forward. And then there was also questions on four and six. And if there's a better explanation for five, but if staff just wants to quickly highlight those grants.
Yeah. So on the one from the schools, that is actually grant money that the schools are getting that will be using for those upgrades. So that's not additional city money, but because we are the fiscal, I'm, I'm sorry, because we do manage their projects, the money will be coming to us to do those projects. And then on, let's see, item was six, your other one?
Four and six.
And so those four and six are both grants. Was there a specific question about those?
Yeah, I think if we, I mean, it's clear in here that this will be, this is the grant one, number four, the Edward Byrne is supposed to is to expand the ability for officers to patrol the city on bikes, right? So there was just a question about making sure that the city was thoughtful and it may be a misunderstanding that it was grant funding. So I just wanted to note that we had received the email and that if we could highlight those. And then Hunter was on for number six. Are they? Okay, so hopefully that gives suitable answers because the information for both of those are included. And the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act Grant, we received those before. Oh, the, I guess the amendment isn't here. That's usually here, the contract with them. So maybe that will be helpful for somebody to have. Okay. Sorry, but just the email popped up and I was trying to give more information. There's usually a contract, I think, attached to those. But maybe she has her answers yet, but wanted to make sure that we were looking at these dollars in an equitable way. And from what it says, I think we, we plan to do that. KF and Teens Give and those type of programs, I think, you know, they align with equity goes quite often. All right. So counselors, any other questions or comments? No. Okay. So I think my comments last, I, so I'm going to vote on ten, which is the amending the Shawso Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau Agreement. I, you know, I think that seeking industry representatives is, I think, a goal that all of us want. I've noted before that I wish the conversations around this had happened differently, especially with as far as branding for the CACBB. So hopefully in the future, people will be more mindful of that. Also more diverse representation on the board. I know that has been discussed as one of the current board members. But I think whoever the next board member, since it's currently Heather and I, that's one there. Understanding the history of changing this position right now. Previously, the former counselors, who I think was Counselor Signer and Galvin, they were on there under a different leadership, but that leadership was not doing everything that they you know, needed to do and that was of their mission, that a person was eventually replaced. I think the current ED is definitely more aligned with our, what we say our values are. But the CACBB has a lot of work to do to create an organization that looks to look at tourism in a more equitable fashion. And so my hesitancy here would be just around some of the messiness of how this came about, but I think ultimately this may be better if it's a more diverse group that's appointed. And I hope that that the board members ensure that it is. I joined this because I wanted to make sure that, and it was hard because COVID, what happened right when we were appointed to this board, but I think we're in a position where we've been with some other things of industry asking, industry representatives asking for funding and able to dictate that funding. And I do think there should be a level of oversight to make sure that the diversity component, who we are trying to attract is tourism and what we consider as hot sites to highlight that we do a better job there. And so I'm hoping that that all happens with the, with these changes. There wasn't a guarantee that it would happen with the current makeup. And so I'm not going to not vote for it because it's not happening now. And maybe with more emphasis, it'll be possible. I just really don't think it makes a difference, but I know that they put in there that that's a goal. It's been a goal that we talked about. And so I hope it occurs.
Do we want to get public comment for the consent agenda?
Yeah, but I'll, some comments. All right. So our counselors, any other comments from you? Okay, so we'll open it up to public comment now.
Mayor, if you'd like to speak to council at this time about the consent agenda, please click the raise hand icon in your Zoom webinar. If you're joining us via telephone, you can press star nine. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please share your place of residence when you begin. And our first speaker is Marvin Morgan.
And if I can just interject before they begin that these are four items that are on the consent agenda.
Mr. Morgan, can you hear us?
Thank you very much. I did not know I had the option of unmuting myself. I'm Marvin Morgan. I serve as interim pastor at the Sojourners United Church of Christ here in Charlottesville. I reside at nine two five Dorchester Place, apartment three oh six Charlottesville. I want to begin this brief comment with the quest, a question. How many of you are aware that there are chains lying at the feet of the Statue of Liberty? Beginning at her right foot, going underneath the shawl or the gown and appearing again at the left.
Pastor Morgan?
Yes.
Is this related to an item on the consent agenda?
Yes, it has to do with the Court Square Slave Block Citizens Advisory Group's request to remove, to move two parking spaces.
Yeah, so you can make those comments at the next public comment period, but this right now is just for the items that the clerk just read.
The invitation sent this afternoon was to log on at six thirty. Did I misunderstand that in some way?
So this is just a public comment section on the consent agenda. We'll be opening it up shortly for a public comment on other matters.
Okay, later this evening?
Just shorter. Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Whittle. Ms. Whittle, can you hear us?
I think I, I may have raised my hand as well in error. So I'll wait. Get you later.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Kimber Hockey.
And I might be wrong too. Is this the public, the community matters time to talk?
Not quite yet, Ms. Hawke.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. All right. So we should, I don't see any additional hands. Okay. So we'll close the public comment section for items on the consent agenda. Counselors, any further questions or comments? All right, Ms. Thomas, would you take a vote, please?
I gotta make a motion, I think.
Oh, yeah.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That carries four zero. Next up, managers' response to community matters and to counselors.
Good evening, council. I do have a few items from the last meeting. The first is there was some reference to the city needing to do something in regards to the kudzu taking over the area on John Warner Parkway. I did have a chance to check in with Parks and Recreation to get more clarity on what is our approach for managing this problem of the invasive species. At this moment, the focus is on getting, getting the weeds out of the trees and then to work on totally destroying it on the ground. That does take multiple applications in order to seriously do damage to a very aggressive species. So ultimately, the, the response is we're continuing to need to prioritize funding in this space, which came up in the Planning Commission's discussion at CIP last week or week before. So there's a need for additional resources in order to be able to effectively do something about it. The problem is very much aware of, very much aware of the team and on the list of priority projects. We just have to continue to be diligent about addressing it. Second item is in reference to a suggestion that we probably should rethink the leaf collection system, loose leaf collection versus bag collection. In taking a look at how we arrived at the decision, twenty eighteen and nineteen, a survey was performed to complete the review of a move from the bag collection to the loose leaf collection. There are three priorities that arose out of that survey, environmental concerns, budgetary impacts, and just optimizing efficiency overall. So just ultimately, their response to the public at large is while we know it may not be everyone's best wish that we do it this way, it does appear it's the most appropriate manner in order for us to move away from plastic bag use, focusing on budget impact, and then of course figuring out a better way to utilize staff to be able to get as many leaves up as quickly as possible because we know there's a large supply. But ultimately, we'll continue to take a look and monitor the situation, probably do surveys in the future to make sure everyone is satisfied with the approach that is currently being taken. And if there's anything that we can do to improve that, then public parks welcomes hearing from the public as well. And then the third item, while it was not directly in the last meeting, but it has come up and has been a source of regular contact, just wanna give a response to the public at large, aware of the situation at Midway Manor, we get inquiries and calls all the time. City manager's office is very aware of the situation, I myself have reached out and have taken a number of efforts to try to do what we can to improve the situation. We have stayed in contact with the property managers and done what we believe as a city we can do. There are very limited options as to what we can and cannot do, and we have pretty much exhausted all of the remedies available to us. But to simply just try to keep the property owners on notice that we are paying attention to what's going on and it is our desire that they do their very best to ensure that the elevators work in the building, that they get them repaired and up and running. And we are aware that they are planning to change out those elevators in the first quarter of twenty-two. So we will celebrate along with everyone else when that is finally done, and in the meantime, we hope that they will be able to keep them running and keep everything working as we need it to. The last thing is just, most of you may have known, may have seen our recent announcement that we do have a new director of Parks and Recreation. Dana Kessler will begin his term, his tenure on the twentieth of December, along with our new director of Public Works, Stacy Smalls, will be relocating from Fairfax. That is all that we have for community matters.
Alright, thank you very much for that. Councillors, are there any questions?
I was just gonna comment that relative to the leaf piece, what I feel like we've heard a lot is just the concern of leaps going into the drain system, so I think as we can, I think I'm a big believer that this bulk program is much better for all the reasons just stated, but I do think that as we're educating the public, that's one of the things we should continue. I know we do it already, but to continue to highlight because that seems to be a concern by many residences that people are piling them in front of those drainage systems, and that's problematic, which I agree that it is. But thank you for the update, and that's just what I wanted to come on.
I wanted to note one other email that at least I got, maybe others got as well. A concern by a citizen that the manner in which the trucks are operated, they blow a lot of air apparently out through the top and ends up blowing a lot of air and dust all over the place. And for, apparently there is a way to stop that from happening, to put a, some kind of a cap on it or a filter on it or something like that. If anybody saw that and had more details and can provide more details, that would be great, but the citizen who was filing the request was basically doing so on behalf, he said, of people with breathing problems. And if there's a way to alleviate that and still pick up the leaves, that would be great.
I'll take a look into that matter.
So next up, we have the community matters. Section, we have eight people that have pre-registered. If we can put all the hands down until we announce and then open it up at the same, at once, so people can get in. And then we'll have slots for eight additional speakers.
Alright, our first speaker is Frank Vector. Mr. Vector, can you hear us?
There, I hope you can hear me. Hi, I just unmuted myself, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Fantastic, council, Mayor Walker, Deputy Sanders, thank you for this format. I live on six and a half street, three oh four, six and a half street. I've lived here for eleven years, I've owned the residence now for five, it's a duplex. And I'm just a happy resident here. Six and a half street, this, my comment has to do with the possibility of the city or addressing the half streets in town. I'm told by, in a conversation with Brennan Duncan, that there are several half streets, I knew that, maybe two hundred residents on such streets. This has to do with the half streets not being in very good sync with many corporations and such that one wants to order a product from or whatever it may be. Healthcare.gov, that I had trouble putting my address in, registering on, I had to spell out the street. I mentioned, I talked to someone else who had that same issue. You can often get around your mailing address on a half street being somewhat difficult, but you almost always have some difficulty in telling some person even where you live. I've had things been addressed to twelfth street, you know, I live on a half street. Instead of three oh four, six and a half street, it might be three thousand forty-six, twelfth street, things like that happen. And I was prompted to talk to Mr. Duncan the other day and learned about this possibility of addressing you by, you know, I was just trying to get a free three-month membership to something and it wouldn't take the address, and there was nothing I could do to get it to take the address. And it said, now make sure it's your bank address. Well, I gave them the exact bank address and something tells me that if I were to use some fake address, like somebody's address on Seventh Street, that wouldn't agree with my bank address and that would probably still be a problem. So there's an issue with that, and I was thinking that the council and the city might consider having residents of those streets suggest a new name for those streets, and it might be an opportunity for a local community to have some interaction with the broader community who might also have ideas about what streets might be named. My street happens to have an honorary name, Winnebago Way. I understand Charlottesville is a sister city with a town in Ghana, which is called Winneba or Winneba. So I even tried to send a postcard to the guy who spearheaded that, who lives on my street, saying, hey, glad to be on Winnebago Way with you. But the post office, it just didn't get there at all, because I guess there is a database. And in the ideal, maybe both Winnebago Way and six and a half street could be in that database, but apparently that's not possible. So I just wanted to bring the council's attention to this and see if we might address it in some way.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Frally. Ms. Frally, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, I wanted to speak about the PCRB, and since it's on the agenda, won't there be an opportunity to speak then? No, that's not a hearing?
It's not a hearing, you can speak now or at the end of the meeting.
Well, I've said this many times, I support a strong PCRB and I support the ordinance that was written December third. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Drain. Ms. Drain, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, my name's Lisa Drain and I'm a Charlottesville city resident. First, I just want to thank Mayor Walker for her service to the city these past four years. She has taught us a lot of lessons and has been a voice for equity in our community, and I hope our new city councillors will remember her voice when considering new policies and practices. Second, I'd like to speak to the disposition of the statues that council is discussing this evening. I do support giving the Stonewall Jackson statue to the LAX Art Museum and giving the Sacagawea Lewis Clark statue to Charlottesville's Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center. On the matter of the Robert E. Lee statue, I wanted to speak more depth about that as it has a personal significance for me. On August eleventh, twenty seventeen, my younger daughter was one of the UVA students and community members who held space at the Jefferson statue as they were surrounded by torch-wielding screaming white nationalists and neo-Nazis. She didn't think she was getting out of that ring of fire alive. But despite that traumatic experience, she, my older daughter and I, joined counter protesters the next morning on Market Street. In the shadow of the Robert E. Lee statue, we stood up to the threatening mobs of people who had assembled in Charlottesville ostensibly to protest the proposed removal of that statue. Later, in a cruel twist of fate, that same daughter who was at the rotunda the night before was badly injured in the domestic terrorist car attack. For four years, I've driven by the Lee statue, reliving that awful weekend that my family and our community endured. For four years, I've joined other community members in advocating here and in Richmond for the removal of Confederate statues in our public spaces. Last summer, when the Lee and Jackson monuments finally came down, I breathed a sigh of relief, but I knew we weren't done. Removing the statues was a huge symbolic victory, but that act would not bring back Heather Heyer or undo the physical and emotional damage to my daughter and the dozens of others who were injured on A twelve. And above all, it would not correct the harms of the past four hundred years that our black citizens have endured. As long as the Lee statue remains intact, the harm persists. As you consider your options for this statue, I urge you not to send it to another place, but to do the courageous thing, keep it here and give it to the Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center. In the capable hands of Dr. Andrea Douglas, the swords into plowshares proposal calls for the statue to be melted down and transformed into a work of art that reflects the values of the community. The Heritage Center will lead a comprehensive community engagement process, giving priority to the voices of the descendants of those enslaved in this area. This community engagement will be as important as the resulting physical work of art. We have the opportunity to be an example for the rest of the country on how to turn racist symbols of oppression and hatred to works of healing and beauty. This process will give us the opportunity to grapple with the past and use history to understand our present. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimber Hocky. Hocky, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Hi, good evening, Mayor Walker and council, Kimber Hocky, city resident. We're asking you to deny the Zero NASSA upzoning this evening. Once again, we're witnessing the status quo of a developer coming back after being denied on a previous application and asking this council for more profits by upzoning ethics and welfare of people. This is the flood zone and the area will flood in the future. It has a ten out of ten extreme flood risk according to FloodFactor, a nonpartisan analysis group. We just saw in August in Western Buckingham, residents of Hurley who suffered death and total destruction of their homes from flooding. I can forge you pictures of that. Residents weren't covered by insurance and FEMA denied the request for aid, saying it was not of such severity and magnitude despite the total destruction. What we are seeing, if you approve this, is a status quo of a faulty process. There was no meeting with residents about this. There was no city floodplain expert president, present at the PC meeting. Mr. Mitchell deferred to the applicant who's not qualified to explain the floodplain. She has a financial interest in that as well. Mr. Mitchell appeared to help the developer and dodged Ms. Dowell's question regarding the lack of affordable housing by stating, this is not a question of affordable housing. Thank goodness that Commissioner Dowell had the good sense of responding that all such projects are a question of providing affordable housing. Commissioner Russell pointed out that this is a sensitive area in the new flum. There should be more affordable units at deeper levels of affordability, however, this is not happening here. The affordable housing issue is important, again, question of a status quo that we witnessed for twenty years of profits over people. With council handing over higher profits by allowing developers to upzone without any exchange for truly affordable housing. There's also a strange misnomer here because the owner is listed as Franklin Street Land Trust III. However, this is hardly an affordable housing land trust model. You just upzone the entire city with a new flum, so the rationale being we would get more affordable housing in the city. So this is a chance to put that affordable housing elsewhere instead of the same old, same old. It appears unethical to put more people in higher density into an environmentally vulnerable area that is guaranteed to flood. It would seem that it also violates the goal three of the city plan of providing a beautiful and sustainable area, natural area, this area is not sustainable. It violates three point one stating that, that the engagement in a robust and context-sensitive urban planning and implementation and quality housing, this cannot be defined as quality housing. So we just, we wonder where you will be when all these houses eventually get flooded or destroyed. Well, we'll all be sitting up high and dry uphill away from such dangers, and how will these people be bailed out financially? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Hossack. Mr. Hossack, can you hear us?
Good evening, this is John Hossack, eleven Davis Avenue. Thank you, council, for taking time to listen to me. Nassau Street is in the floodplain, the Army Corps of Engineers, following nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-nine havoc and camille, produced a sixty, seventy-page report that specifically highlighted the flood risk in this particular part of the city. It produced specific recommendations that no housing development occur within the floodplain. According to this report, there are major flood events approximately five times per century. Since the last event was in nineteen sixty-nine, this means that we are now living in borrowed time even before considering climate change-related impacts. Bear in mind that during the flooding on Nassau in nineteen sixty-nine, the water was above head height and there were photographs of boats being used in that street. I will also note that the county paid attention to the Army Corps report and band building in the floodplain. Meanwhile, Charlottesville unwise, they chose to ignore Army Corps advice. FloodFactor.com produces updated flood analysis that accounts for both persistent wet events, i.e. days long, combined with intense flash flood events of the sort that are projected to become more common in more extreme incoming decades due to climate change. FloodFactor.com lists flood risk as extreme in this part of Nassau. And then actually, the entire street, there's an entire line of houses that are impacted. Flood Factor indicates that a property in Nassau Street has a twenty percent chance of seeing floodwaters of seven point five feet within the next fifteen years. If one looks at houses on Nassau Street, it may be observed that at least some of them are built on stilts to account for anticipated flood events. Why would the city council even remotely consider building on such a site with all of these glaring warnings? If you listen to what I've just said, you will see there's a problem of not a matter of if, but when, and we are actually overdue today. Reiterating some of what Kimber has just said, during the course of the Planning Commission meeting, one commission pointed that Nassau is actually in a sensitive area on the future land just map, but yet they voted to upzoning without requirement for affordable housing. These observations above point a questionable decision-making on the part of the Planning Commission. I'll also note in your consent agenda that you budgeted three hundred and seven thousand dollars to be allocated to study flood preparedness in Moers Creek watershed. Actually, reviewer floodfactor.com tells you that today, the Moers Creek sewage plant is at extreme risk and is in close proximity to Nassau. What does it say that affordable housing has been built elsewhere in Nassau? Are some of these lives less valuable than others? For all of these reasons, I strongly urge the council to reject the rezoning and building on the site and by extension, similar impacted sites throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Marvin Morgan. Mr. Morgan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you very much. And I want to thank you for all that you do, all of you, for the city of Charlottesville. I'm Marvin Morgan, I'm the interim pastor of Sojourners United Church of Christ. I'm Marvin Morgan. I'm the interim pastor, sojourners, United Church of Christ, and I reside here in Charlottesville. First of all, I agree wholeheartedly with the comments made earlier regarding melting down the statues and turning those swords and swordholders into symbols of peace. Uh, um, that would be a wonderful gesture and a leadership gesture by our city. Earlier, I mentioned just briefly the Statue of Liberty. Whether you are aware that chains are lying at the feet of the Statue of Liberty, they can be seen at her right foot and at her left foot, uh with a broken link at the left foot. There were mixed feelings, feelings when that statue was about to be presented to the United States. There were mixed feelings even among those in the African American community because they knew that the freedom symbolized by broken chains was not at that point realized. Even though slavery had technically ended with legislation, they were aware that that freedom was not yet experienced by people of color in this country. Members of the council, you have an opportunity. Unlike the confusion surrounding the chains at the feet of the Statue of Liberty, you have an opportunity to do something extraordinary. It is a simple request. Those two parking spaces that have been uh identified for you by a wonderful historian, Freeman Hobbs Allen, um, those two parking spaces that are occupying what was once the slave block would prevent the public from seeing whatever sign the Historic Resources Committee chooses to erect and to remember the devastating institution of slavery that was manifest at Court Square. We are asking you to take a very simple step while waiting for other decisions to be made by the Historic Resources Committee. Help advise your engineer to move those parking spaces so the public will be able to honor that space and recognize it for what it is. Three minutes goes by very fast. Thank you for this time. Bless you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anthony Lopez. Mr. Lopez, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, uh, my name's Anthony Guy Lopez. I'm an enrolled tribal member of the Co-Creek Sioux Tribe. I'm a graduate of the University of Virginia. Uh, I live, my residence is in Fairfax, Virginia. And I'm the co-founder of the Native American and Indigenous Studies Center Initiative at UVA. And I'm here to appeal to you to support conveying the Lewis and Clark and Sacagawea statue to the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center. I I actually thought this was a settled matter, that we had come to a consensus of the community and had, we're working in a very constructive and educational partnership with Sacagawea's family's descendants, uh, who are members of the Shoshone tribe. I thought we had come to an understanding and um so I'm surprised that this is being relitigated or being considered for anything else. I was part of the original request back in 2009 when there was a, the outcome was a plaque that was placed at the base or near the base of the statue. And I just, this has already been discussed, you know, that uh city council meetings the last time. But in 2009, we were so far away from tearing down statues or removing statues. It was all that we could get from the city and from the Historic Resources Committee. All we could get was a plaque. Uh, we would have liked to have removed the statue, but um they were so far away from that idea. And times are different now. Now it seems uh more reasonable and appropriate. So um I know that there's some competition for the statue. There are other tribes, but what I want to do is support the existing partnership with the Shoshone representatives that have come to Charlottesville twice already and have brought forth an educational interpretation and understanding. Uh, we've had um community dinners. They, they gave a workshop at the University of Virginia. We have a a very productive and collaborative partnership with the Shoshone representatives, uh Ms. Rose Anne Abrahamson and her family. And the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center is facilitating that. And I think that's the kind of thing that Charlottesville, that's the direction that that I would urge Charlottesville to go. Uh, and I thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is Alexandria Searls. Searls, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Alexandria Searls, the executive director of the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center and applicant for the Lewis Clark and Sacagawea statue. We have been told that this process might go from selecting the best contextualization for the statue to a highest bidder situation. There are many reasons why this shouldn't happen, and the main one is that it doesn't live up to the values you've expressed from when the Limhai Shoshone first came here in 2009 to when they came in 2019 at the public meeting when you voted for the removal. And mo- most importantly, in the request for proposals that put contextualization as the main requirement. The Limhai Shoshone are important. Representation is important. The true identity of Sacagawea is important. We based our work on the values you expressed. Contextualization can be a successful intervention, a positive and rewarding endeavor. Let's look at what concerns us the most about the statue. That black and indigenous children will look at the statue and will internalize its message of a woman of color being lesser than, that little girls will feel demeaned and disregarded. As we worked with the statue this year with black families and homeschool groups, we began to develop contextualization. These family and, these families and groups valued our discussion of the representation of Sacagawea as a way of making their children more visually literate. Today's children have thousands of images thrown at them every day on the internet, many extremely problematic and related to identity. As you know, black little girls in particular are pushed through societal pressure and imagery to lose their childhoods. It is absolutely vital that children gain visual literacy and begin to address issues of representation as they have been manifested historically and today. And from what I've seen from children learning about the statue and the difference between the actual Sacagawea and the depiction, they are up to the task. In particular, two 10-year-old black girls visiting in two different groups this year impressed me with their ideas and by their references. As a community, we create meaning together. Continuity is important for all of us who believed in what the city was telling about context, contextualization and representation for all that we've gone through. We believe that we have offered the strongest proposal for contextualization. We ask that you choose according to the values you expressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, um, our next speaker is James Groves. Mr. Groves, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening. Good evening. My name is James Groves and I'm a city resident. Uh, this evening, I asked that you deny the request to rezone Zero Nassau Street, and I offer two reasons. First, climate change puts homes on Nassau Street at extreme flooding risk. And two, inviting more community members to reside in flood prone areas is incompatible with the equity focus of the city's recently adopted comprehensive plan. The Zero Nassau Street application and review process makes clear that the developer, city staff, and Planning Commission are aware that this property sits in or immediately adjacent to a federal emergency management agency, a FEMA designated floodplain. Yet none of those parties ever acknowledged that FEMA's maps do not consider the increasingly intense rainfall and flash flooding expected from climate change. Fortunately, up-to-date flood risk analysis is available from the nonprofit First Street Foundation, which has worked with leading climate change modelers at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, the University of California at Berkeley, George Mason University, IBM, and elsewhere to develop predictions of climate change flood risks. Their FloodFactor.com website drills down to individual properties and rates Nassau Street as a 10 out of 10 in terms of flood risk. Extreme. First Street estimates that just over 400 out of some 11,000 homes in Charlottesville are at serious or extreme risk of climate change enhanced flooding. Approve this rezoning and you will add to that number. If you stand in Nassau Street and look up and down the street, you see the roads sloping down towards this property. If you look across the street toward Reeves Park and beyond to Monticello Road, you see the land sloping down towards this property. Homes built on Nassau Street will be among the city's most vulnerable to climate change induced river plus flash flooding. Do not knowingly place more city residents in harm's way. Vote down this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Don Gatheres. Mr. Gatheres, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Good evening. Uh, thank you for this. Just a few points to make. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Walker for her extraordinary leadership through these most trying and difficult, difficult times. I don't think any of us realize just as of yet just how much that you will be missed. Um, secondly, I want to encourage everyone, please, if you have not, go ahead and get your COVID vaccinations. Um, I unfortunately now can tell you firsthand just how draining and debilitating that it is. Thank God that I have received the vaccines, otherwise I'm not sure exactly what state I would be in at this point. Please support, uphold, and vote for the the PCR B ordinance that was presented to you. And uh also uh the 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 Lee statue. Please uh grant the uh the recommendation, the suggestion to give that over to the Jeff School um for the Swords and Plowshares Project. Please go ahead and grant the the Sacagawea's Lewis and Clark statues over to uh, excuse me, Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center. Um, and please, let's, let's just get this off of our plates and our tablets. This is dangled in front of us for far too long. And it's time to take some serious and concrete action on it. Uh, again, please continue to wear your mask, social distances uh as requested. Please take care of yourselves and happy holidays to each and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Shelton. Mr. Shelton, can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I first just wanted to speak in favor of the uh uh the proposal from the Jefferson School and also in favor of the proposal from the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center. And also to note that I feel it would be very inappropriate for us to uh cast aside the work that the Shoshone tribe has uh put towards a resolution for this. Uh, so I hope that that uh can happen. Um, I also wanted to draw attention to an article uh in Seabill Tomorrow on uh from November 22nd about the Charlottesville SWAT team. And uh something that I hadn't noticed in uh former Chief Brackney's statement that uh where she said that the uh, it appears that the police department is looking at reforming the SWAT team. And uh they also uncovered um uh some command notes from a meeting early in November where it appears that the CPD Command is looking to set aside money in their upcoming budget request to fund the SWAT team in the future. And I think it would be a very serious mistake to re-enable uh one of the worst concentrations of just uh bad police behavior that we've seen in this town. We all recall the scandal that led to the SWAT team being dissolved in the first place. I think it would be a very bad mistake to re-enable that prior to getting actual good oversight of that department in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Whittle. Ms. Whittle, can you hear us? You'll have to unmute your microphone.
Hello? Oh, hi. I don't know if um, I don't have a whole lot to um probably improve on what um Mr. Groves and Ms. Hocky have already said. But I just wanted to make a few comments about the um proposed development on Nassau Street. And um as the other speakers have said, I don't, I, this doesn't make any um sense to me to allow considering um development in a um high-risk flood zone, and it just seems irresponsible um with regard to future residents and obviously on the environment in terms of runoff. Um, and I, I actually don't, in another funny way, I don't understand why you're allowing, considering allowing building in a flood zone at all, considering we just upzone the entire city. And one of the rationales that I repeatedly heard from um council members was that um you know, upzoning was necessary so that developers wouldn't have to build in flood zones. Um, and several times counselors wrote and said, well, the only land left is flood zones and we can't build there. So I, I, I just don't understand why you're now choosing to build in a, possibly allow building in a flood zone. Um, finally, I found it disappointing, kind of along these lines, um that you're considering upzoning without affordability in an area that your own recently passed future land use map has deemed sensitive, meaning that it's supposed to require limited development with only deep affordability if you're going to upzone. But it seems like you have now um chosen to violate the tenants of your own recently passed flum. So I just want to say, it doesn't make sense to me. It seems irresponsible, again, with regard to future people, future residents and to the environment. It contradicts your own future land use maps as well as its stated goals of housing equity and affordability. And um just in terms of increasing trust with the community, which is something else that another council member uh emphasized to me was important. It doesn't seem like a step in the right direction. So thank you for listening. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Right, our next speaker is Dustina Abramson. Ms. Abramson, can you hear us?
Yes, we are here. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am Roseanne Abrahamson and my daughter Dustina is here. We are the familial descendants of Sacagawea. And I would like to say that I want to clarify my ancestry. She's my great, great, great aunt. And uh I want to address the decision that is going to be made today. And I, what I want to say is I feel like we're stepping back in time. We're making a decision that was made 200 years ago and we're at it again. And we all know her history. We know that Sacagawea's family was massacred, murdered. And as a child, she was kidnapped by the Hadatsa, who are known as the three affiliates. who are known as the three affiliated tribes. And she was sold by them and traded to an abusive white Frenchman, Charbonneau. And Charbonneau was recorded in Lewis and Clark's history as being very abusive to her until her death. And the only persons who treated her kindly in her life were the Lewis and Clark Expedition members. And as she was dying, the clerk at Fort Manuel Lisa stated that she was a good woman. I believe that history has many lessons and we have to face what we learned from those lessons today. U.S. leaders, the community, and we all as a trustee of a legacy we leave for future generations of Virginians and for my family. Did we make the best decision? And did my family fight hard enough to retain her dignity and history? As we all know, she is the most famous woman in the history of the United States and worldwide. Let us ponder on this together as we determine the decision on this decade-long struggle for you and we as her defendants. I would like to say at this time, we'd like to see the statue remain with the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center and not be sent in places unknown in purpose and future. We all know that she was vital to the expedition, but now it is vital that the statue with her image is in a facility dedicated to telling about the expedition, its members, and its legacy. And I believe Meriwether Lewis and William Clark told us what we should do today, two hundred, two, two hundred years ago. Clark stated in eighteen oh six, Sacagawea, who accompanied the expedition on a long and fatiguing route to the Pacific Ocean and back, deserved a greater reward for her attention and services than when we had in our power to give her. So we ask that today on December sixth, twenty twenty-one, let us give her her due reward as a dignified catalyst and a peace and unity between cultures and place this statue in the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center of Discovery in Charlottesville, Virginia, so that we can celebrate this month and this holiday in peace, knowing that we made the right decision. Lewis, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Hoffman. Hoffman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you very much for, um, having speakers such as the, such as the community members here in the city council. And Kyle Walker, thank you so much. You've always enabled people to speak. Um, and, um, I appreciate you. Uh, I want to say that nineteen seventy-six, I was able to go to PB, I mean, I was able to go to a community college. Uh, I was living in an apartment that was eighty dollars a month. Uh, I came up, uh, through that bicycle, bicycling and busing to go back and forth and then work full-time on the weekends packing bagels. Um, ultimately, I moved through many universities, including Brooklyn College and NYU through different loans and this and that, but became a community activist right away in Brooklyn and then in Manhattan and then finally in Patterson, New Jersey. Why am I saying all this? Because right now I have a TV show that expresses how great PBCC, uh, enables people to be able to move up and, um, have choices. And if, if we don't support the working people here, we're not going to have services. We're not going to have community people. And certainly, I was able to afford housing in Brooklyn is why I was able to move forward and be able to work and go to school at the same time. Uh, and certainly, community college and, uh, supporting the working people through, uh, being able to live and affordability is key to making a city run. Um, and New York City, in fact, has had many, many problems because they gentified most of New York City. It's so ridiculous. I wanted to remind everybody that. And then also, I want to say, please get your vaccines, uh, please be masked and stop traveling. If we had stopped traveling in March twenty twenty for six weeks, as they, uh, told us, and it's still going on. Uh, things are being politicized. Please hire or vote for people that are not going to be political and that are sticking to the facts of the science. Um, it's been a ridiculous wait for me to get rehab for my ankle and other people too, because, uh, people are just not staying home. But also, the kids are just getting vaccinated. So we have to give this some time, but we have to cooperate. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Grace Softdeer Hayes. Hayes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Hello, I am a Chippewa woman and live in Charlottesville, raising three children there. I've spoken before to your council numerous occasions about Lewis and Clark and Sacagawea statue. I was there in two thousand nine, also in two thousand nineteen, November nineteenth, for those delegations. I've come to stand by and support Sacagawea's familial descendants from the Winnebago Shoshone Nation. And also for the city of Charlottesville and for all people. I, I've spoken about this repeatedly that in order for people to come together who have different ways with respect and honor, we both have to be walking toward one another. You see this family coming to the city of Charlottesville to work in peace and cooperation for a better understanding. And at that time, on November nineteenth, Mayor Walker and the city council members stood by as well. They showed up, they stood up, they made agreements. And at that time, like Mr. Lopez and like the family, I thought we had made a decision, uh, an agreement that it would go to the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center. Why did we move it? Because it was harmful to women and girls. Not just women of color, but everyone's girl. To see a woman in a position like this. That statue, in some ways, when I look at it, it tells the truth and it tells a lie. Because you can see the demeaning posture. This is a trafficked woman, a trafficked child. And one of the reasons why it is so painful to see it in the public over and over is because right now, while we're sitting here talking about this, sisters and daughters are being taken across this continent. This has, this began with the first ship it has, Marindi. And so, out of respect for the family and keeping in right relations, this is what we are doing. We're keeping in right relations. We keep our agreements. Charlottesville, the city of Charlottesville does not have to continue century-old packet of lying Christians. So let us show up for one another. You know, Alexandra Searls at the Exploratory Center has herself shown up in right relations with indigenous people, with descendants, and works hard for experiential learning there. Uh, this is a blessing for the children. You know, so we could tell the whole history of this statue. I really appreciate your time and I hope you make a decision for continuing right relations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Bauer. Bauer, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you. Good evening. Um, I am, uh, here on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, which I currently chair, um, to make really just two points. Um, first, the, the Human Rights Commission, uh, wants to echo, um, our strong support for the Jefferson School's proposal with regard to the disposition of the Lee statue by turning it into art. This proposal best speaks to the values of equity and racial justice that the Human Rights Commission was created to advance, and we urge you to accept that proposal. Secondly, I wanted to turn to a letter that the Human Rights Commission sent to you, all councilors, on November ninth with regard to, uh, inequities related to city staff of color and particularly black employees. Um, and I'll just highlight a couple issues from that letter that we pointed out. In August of twenty nineteen, uh, the city council was presented with a report and recommendation from the City Manager's Advisory on Organizational Equity. And that report identified serious issues with compensation and found, quote, "That it is clear that black employees generally earn less than their white colleagues in most roles and in most payband categories," end quote. It also found that salary data revealed that white and Asian employees earn above the average salary for city employees. Black employees earn less. The city recommended, the, uh, the report recommended the city engage in additional professional data analysis to understand the extent of salary inequity more completely and recommended the need for several internal structures to support the city growth and development in this area. These structures included a standing office and strategic goals around equity. The committee spent considerable time addressing the concern that these new structures would be insignificant without significant investment in changing the culture internally and, and went on from there. Uh, the Human Rights Commission urged and urges you to take the following immediate action. One, prioritize the publication with a sense of urgency of an updated equity report as soon as, soon as the Director of Human Resources, uh, is in place. It should outline the steps that have been taken since August twenty nineteen to make the city a good employer for people of color. We also understand there's funding for compensation and class study that would work on this issue from an internal equity standpoint. This study has, however, been held up for lack of an HR director. We urge you to prioritize this study by the incoming HR director. Uh, we made several other recommendations, but I'll leave it at that for this evening. Um, we are deeply concerned that the, that the city should be, uh, a welcoming and positive place for people of color and particularly for black employees to work. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And so the other hands that's up, that's our eighth. We're at our eighth speaker and we've had sixteen total. And so there'll be an opportunity to speak, um, at the end of the meeting. Um, councilors, are there any comments?
I think a lot of these things we'll get to when we get to our agenda items, but I did want to clarify it because I've heard it from multiple people talking about that we have done the upzoning. Um, I realized that as part of the comprehensive plan, there's a future land use map, which I think council has emphasized will likely be, um, in a different form by the time we're done through the zoning, but we have not, there has been not one change in zoning at this point. Obviously, there's a vision that's placed out there and I certainly understand, um, the concerns with how some of these, these things that are coming before council may be in conflict with that vision. Um, but I just want to make sure that people are really clear that we have, the city as a city has not done any upzoning at this point. That's a process that we're about to embark upon. It will be highly engaging with the community and it will probably take twelve to eighteen months before we get through that fully. And so I just wanted to clarify that for people.
And I'll just emphasize the twelve to eighteen months. So make sure you're engaged the entire time so that you won't be caught by surprise. Um, towards the end, uh, the process is delayed because of that. So it's a process that's starting. So just pay attention throughout the entire process. Any other comments from councilors? So I'll, um, thank you to Lisa and, um, Don for the acknowledgement, um, and Mr. Martin the last time, even though some of the comments on your, um, that you made, I have some questions about, but, um, I think that I, um, the um, Court Square, the auction block that, um, sold enslaved persons. I think that has just been something that I just haven't been able to kind of wrap my head around. I think there are really good intentions, but I know that we've talked about, um, more engagement.
From, I can, I can speak to that real quickly if you'd like.
Sure.
So, but I sit on the Historic Resources Committee. I just want to, because this came up earlier and I should have clarified. Um, that engagement is, is underway and we have a meeting just this Friday and I'm happy just once we have that meeting to provide a more full update to the, to all of council, given this is a topic that continues to, to arise, but that is a process that, that Historic Resources Committee feels passionately should be followed through on, um, before we make any decisions, um, on this location in the, in the, in the scope of what work might be done there. But they're certainly aware of these requests, um, but are, are well underway with, um, an engagement process as, as a committee. So I just wanted to chime in with that. Sorry.
No problem. That's where I thought we were at. So that's, um, good. And we're going to get to the statues, um, discussion a little bit later and, um, PCRB. Um, in terms of the conversations around, there's a comment, I have the same question about SWAT. I think I sent an email to, um, just where we are with that. Process. I know there is no new money being allocated, so that was money, I think that was previously in the budget. But, okay, I was trying to find the comments and talk, but, um, Andrew Shelton comments. But I do think the intention, um, behind that part of the criticism at that time and has been with the dismantling of Jade and the, you know, um, those kind of specialty units was what do you have to kind of work your way up to? And so that is a very important conversation to have because if the desire is more equity and to dismantle the militarization of, um, police departments, particularly ours, um, then we would not be able to put those type of specialty units back in place for officers to be able to differentiate their, um, space at CPD. And I think anyone hired, that has to be made known to. So I don't know what the current status is of, I, um, that centered around training and hopefully reinstituting, but I, that is something that, um, needs to be addressed. And the former chief, Dr. Brackney, did send an email, I think specifically addressed to, um, Counselor Payne. Um, and I don't have that pulled up, so if I'm wrong about that, but, um, and maybe some staff numbers. The, um, Mary's comments about, um, you know, employees, I remember when that equity report was completed, that staff thought that that was, um, that that could potentially bring some kind of legal challenges to the city based on how employees have been treated. And it has afforded the city quite a bit of time to attempt to figure things out and, um, in a more equitable manner. I know the HR director position is going to be key to this. So I've been, I think I've been patient, even though I keep bringing it up, but I haven't been persistent on the fixing of it because I think that with all of our kind of, you know, the changes in leadership, you know, positions and not hiring, having an HR director. I think since that has focused on this. Leave that comment alone. I think that this is something that we really have to, um, you know, focus on. The damage that has been done with, um, the firing of, um, Chief Brackney, and I know someone is going to come later and say with all employees, but I have maintained the position that I've maintained and I would, um, still maintain that position. Um, but I will say that the standard set there that it is, um, something that the city is going to have to do a lot of work on top of the work that it already had to do in terms of when you're talking about just, um, diversity and inclusion. Uh, and I hope that you all understand that. Even though, you know, there has, I don't think you do, but I hope that, and I'm not, I'm talking specifically to councilors right now. I hope that you all understand that. All right, the rest of my comments I'll save until um, tonight. Councilors, any other comments? Okay, so it's um, eight eleven, so we will come back at um, thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six after. Well, it's been eight eleven, so let's just say thirty-seven.
I mean, twenty-six?
Twenty-six, yes. Thank you. So we're all back. Um, so I'll call this meeting back to order. Next, uh, we have um, uh, ordinance, amending the Police Civilian Review Board ordinance.
Shall I lead this off, Mayor Walker?
Yeah, it says that you are here.
Yeah, okay. So uh, as, as folks know, the PCRB, uh, the, the present PCRB, which was constituted over a year ago, um, has been working to develop a draft ordinance that came out of the October two thousand twenty statutes that were passed by the Virginia General Assembly. Uh, and following their efforts, uh, which resulted in a draft being approved by them back in August. Uh, a little work group, actually, but even before that, a work group had been sort of put together. It was myself, Michael Payne, uh, PCRB members, Bill Mendez and Jeff Frazier. Uh, and we were trying to work out some differences between what councilors thought was appropriate and what PCRB members thought was appropriate. Uh, along the way, Deputy Manager, Deputy City Manager Ashley Reynolds Marshall joined the city and therefore joined us. We were glad to have her assistance uh, this fall. Uh, PCRB Executive Director Hansel Agwalar was hired. And he brought to us, not only his, mainly, I mean, the, is, his experience both as a member of the Fairfax PCRB and also as an investigator of police misconduct for the city of Washington DC. So lots of different experiences. Uh, we kept working on drafts and trying to revise and refine those drafts. Uh, even into last week. Uh, and finally, the version that got put out on the, on the website uh, last week. Uh, the December third draft is, was the last draft that we had produced. After that, or actually around that same time, we had sent an earlier draft to uh, City Attorney Lisa Robertson for her comments. She has since come back with a number of comments that we're trying to, I'm trying to incorporate into the draft that uh, that we had circulated to council. Virtually everything that she has suggested, I've gotten, I've gone ahead and put into the new version. Uh, to make the new version, there's nothing there that I'm rejecting. Uh, but obviously there's maybe one final set of tweaks of the legal language to make sure that I've incorporated things the way she thinks it's appropriate. Yeah, eventually, of course, she is City Attorney, is sort of the custodian of the city code and it's up to up to us to make sure we draft something with her assistance that, that she thinks she's going to be able to implement and ultimately to defend. So I've submitted a memo in the packet of significant changes between the draft PCOB, I'm calling it PCOB ordinance now because the new name of the organization would be the Police Civilian Oversight Board. That's the term that is used in the new statute. The PCOB ordinance of August twelfth, twenty twenty-one and the draft of December third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, there are not a lot of changes. We've really worked to, to refine. There are not a lot of changes. We've really worked to to refine the the differences of opinion. What we've got is, I believe, a very strong model for the PCOB. It involves parts of the investigative model. It involves parts of the review focused model. It involves parts of the auditor and monitor focused model. And the result is that we end up with a board that is able to do virtually all of those things. They will have the power to review investigations, to consider civilian complaints, to do its own investigations if necessary, to have reports that would comment on the adequacy of the police department's own investigations, would have a robust subpoena power. The board will have the power to make recommendations to city management about police practices. Not just, hey, this is a case we didn't like, but here is a broad pattern that we don't like. It'll have the focus, the power to focus on broad patterns of police conduct. I will say that the one thing that is not in this ordinance that some people have wanted to have be in this ordinance. The General Assembly authorized us, if we if we wanted to, we could pass a PCOB ordinance that would allow for binding disciplinary determinations by the by the PCOB of police officers. We felt for a number of reasons, this is something I developed with, just working with counselors. All five counselors told me at various points that you did not favor that. And I'll just say briefly why. The first reason is that we still at this point don't aren't clear on what what the PCOB would be allowed to do in terms of Freedom of Information Act, in terms of confidentiality and things like that. More importantly, we felt that it was important that the police chief be allowed to be the chief of the police, and that includes discipline. We, the idea of an oversight board is that the board would oversee, would comment on, perhaps offer recommendations about, but would comment on what the police have already done. So we did not feel that it was necessary to have to go to having actual disciplined decisions by the board. One of the things that I that we wrote into this draft is a provision that says that when the city attorney is comfortable in saying that we are going to be able to have a PCOB meeting that considers disciplinary matters, that considers looking at confidential files, that considers having confidential discussions and deliberations. So in other words, basically to be able to preserve confidentiality where appropriate and where we're justified under the statutes, that that once that certification is given, that the that the General Assembly has now amended FOIA law to make that clear, then without any further action by council, there's a disciplinary recommendation process that will kick in. The idea is that let's have recommendations. Once you have the ability, once the PCOB has the ability to get accurate confidential information and to be able to deliberate in confidence, obviously still announcing the results at the end of things, but that the deliberations should should be able to be done in confidence. Once that has happened, once that certification is given, then under the draft we've got here, the the discipline power would would just sort of be there and would not require further action by council. One of the discussions that we had, both our little working group and ultimately some conversations back and forth with city attorney Robertson, deals with the question of there is an earlier draft that called for a memorandum of understanding between the police department and the and the board over access to information and so on. Ms. Robertson's advice was not to think of it as a memorandum of understanding, but basically just to have the city manager say, here's the standard operating procedure. Here's the way we're going to do it. And obviously, the city manager would work that out with the board and the police department together, since both of them would report to the city manager in a sense. And so if we do that, the way that I've drafted it, given Ms. Robertson's comments, is simply to say that within 45 days of the enactment of this of this ordinance, the standard operating procedure would would be promulgated. And then the board would would be able to to take the action that we'd like to be able to take. Right now, we're in a situation where the present PCRB has one case. It has just gotten approval for procedures to move forward with that one hearing. And once that one hearing is completed under, well, term the 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 present rules, the old rules, if you will, then it would be appropriate, I would think, to transition to the newer system with broader authority, with new operating procedures and newer rules. In any event, the there are a couple of issues that I suggested to people that we needed to to think about in sort of broad terms. The first was this hybrid model. And I think that I've heard from basically everybody that the hybrid model that we've suggested is acceptable to you. The second question that I posted, I posed to everybody last week was that the model would allow the invest, allow the board to investigate an incident, whether or not there is an individual complainant. This case would be somewhere, would be where something comes to the board's attention from a witness or from community chatter or other ways other than an aggrieved citizen filing a complaint. If you read the ordinance the way it is right now, you will see that there are two sections. One is the section that refers to receiving a complaint from a member of the public, any member of the public. And the second would be where the board would be able to investigate something without there having been a formal complaint made to the board. And so there is the one sort of philosophical question about whether we want to limit who the member of the public could be. Would it have to be the the aggrieved person or a direct witness of the the aggrieved persons having been abused or whatever? There are some some ordinances in some cities, and I'll tell you that I personally have read about 50 city ordinances of PCOBs. I know Mr. Mendez is probably at least double that number. But that the question is, do you want to allow anybody to file and to be a complainant in one of these actions? Or do you want it to be simply a witness or the person, the aggrieved party, him herself? And that's right now, we have no limitation on that. If you want to have a limitation, we ought to write that in. This particular draft calls for a relatively low level of attorney involvement. It envisions the board and the executive director for the board as the questioners of witnesses at a hearing, for example. No cross examination for lawyers. The feeling being that you don't want to have this be a proceeding where the the victim, so to speak, the complainant is getting mugged a second time, if you will, of being violated. This is a procedure that I'm familiar with from Title IX complaints up at the university. And it it works pretty well. We've got it built in with a strong subpoena power. I think that's, everybody was comfortable with that. I mentioned a bit about dealing with personnel issues when FOIA laws are clear. The draft includes having a hearing examiner to conduct the hearings. And that's what we approved for the one hearing that will take place under the present procedures. And we'll see how it goes, but I think that that's the way that makes the most sense. So my suggestion would be that we discuss the December 3rd draft that I had put in there. If anybody has questions about any of this or specific issues with any of it, recognizing that there are still these tweaks from Ms. Robertson that would would have to be made before we would actually enact it. Does that sound like a reasonable way to proceed at this point? Do other counselors have questions or comments that we should be discussing first?
In terms of like the process, I agree. I guess the next up, there will be one more PCRB meeting or PCOB, whatever we're going to be calling it in the interim. Before we were to have this formally come before us, like I said, our next meeting. So are we anticipating that they're going to have a discussion and taking a formal vote themselves on on whatever we are at this this conversation, whatever tweaks that are made after this version?
I I didn't have an intention there. I don't, I don't really know what what their desire might be. I I look on it as this is our draft. Obviously, we'd like to have any advice, any input, but we don't need their agreement to to move forward.
So I think I would, you know, I I've stated before about having the procedures go along with this document, and I know that there's been a lot of response about why we will be able to do that later. But I think if we don't know in terms of staff capacity and dollar amount that will go along with whatever we are proving, that that's just a setup in the future for this disaster. So I'll just say that again, and I've said that before. And then if you, you know, I I have some other comments I would have liked for Lisa's comments to have been added and for the PCRB members. And I know we've gotten some feedback through emails, but to have heard that they they are discussion on it. You know, on it too. But in terms, I think the main question that I heard there, I still think that having that the individual file a complaint or participate in the process or, you know, for this PCRB to be able to reach out to them for the process. But I have been kind of leery of that whole anybody can file a complaint at any time process every time that it's been discussed. I understand, and I may feel, would feel better if I could say honestly, I would bring a complaint for it at this point. But I still think, I mean, we've had, you know, in the past, a situation where, you know, there have been could, you know, complaints for afford on behalf of other individuals. And I just think it's better for us to, you know, get that information. You know, for the person to that was wrong to have been to participate in the process. So I still think that individuals should file the complaint in terms of witness someone there on the scene who may file the complaint. But I think there should, and that might, you know, work as long as someone who is on the scene. But I also think that the complainant, the person, there should be a good effort made to make sure that the person who had been harmed in some way is participating in this process.
And as I saw that, one of the loose ends, I I was going to speak to that point too, and I actually agree with the perspective that you shared, Mayor Walker.
Any comments on on other issues, Mayor Walker?
Well, so.
All right. And let me say, by the way, you raised an important point that I neglected to comment on. And that was the the role of the procedures. We wanted to have the procedures done at the same time as we would be, and that they would be approved by council. For various reasons of just humans and trying to get things done in November, it didn't happen. So we do want to have those procedures in place. We spent a fair amount of time talking about those procedures. But we haven't finalized the draft. There was at least one version. I don't know that this is the current one, but there's at least one version that has said that the things wouldn't actually start happening until the procedures were also adopted.
Yeah, no, I do understand that. But I, you know, part of the set, the issues that I had during the work session was trying to understand the how of all of these things we were discussing.
Sure.
And so that's, I just was bringing that back up. I'm not going to be here. And so basically voting on something to leave in someone else's hand, but I just think that that is going to be a challenge. And is there a way if we come to a point where we vote on this ordinance and then it's like, okay, well, maybe that doesn't work or we can't immediately fit it into the budget? Or if it's something to where we are committed to dismantling like SWAT specialty units and we're going to take that money and fund, you know, PCOB positions, then I get it because we have a plan of funding. If we don't have those type of conversations and we we know that the ED can't do it all, we've had that discussion in the past just about the two positions. And so I don't want to set up the future council to not be able to deliver on something that we voted on, or if it's the expectation as it was before for us to fund all the positions at once. And if that's the case, if we are committing to that, how are we going to do it? And that would be part of what would come out of, I think, that procedure conversation. So I haven't been chiming in a lot during, through email, so I guess.
Perhaps the question about the finances, I don't know whether Mr. Aguilar or maybe Ms. Marshall or somebody would have some direct information about that. My understanding is that there was allocated by in the budget $350,000 with relatively little of that allocate actually spent. Is that right, Ms. Marshall? Do you know?
You are correct that for this fiscal year, there was an allocation for PCRB. The majority of that funding is allocated for our executive director, staff member. However, one word of caution I would give is the unpredictability of the current board's utilization of their legal counsel. That is proving to be a pretty heavy cost at this particular point. And we do realize that that cost allocation and usage can change as the board continues to evolve with their ordinance. But because it is unpredictable, it is certainly something that executive director Aguilar and I have discussed of being more conservative, especially this year, to see where that number is actually going to fall to be, to have a better estimate as to how that funding could maybe be moved for some other supports.
Right now, as I understand it, there is not a specific line item for council fees. Is that right?
That is correct. What our budget and finance teams are doing right now, however, is they are moving those expenses into a line item. But what you'll see when you pull their budget is that there was a lump sum allocation. And then when the expenses are coming in, they are being labeled as legal fees. In their upcoming budget, I've actually allocated out in line item thing, so it will look a little different.
Okay. So is there, I mean, I don't know whether this is even a question you can answer, but out of $350,000 allocation for the PCRB, how much of that is likely to be spent between Mr. Aguilar's salaries, council, whatever, whatever other expenses there may be?
Sure. So to give a better perspective on that, and Ms. Aguilar, please weigh in as well. But for the upcoming budgeting process, we actually have requested a new consideration to be able to make sure that there's funding for hearing officers for professional development for the board. And I also believe that investigator pool is in that question. And so right now, if we stuck with the $350,000 budget with legal counsel, there's not a ton of wiggle room. Again, just because their fee is going to be unpredictable as to what you may need to use them for. We do monitor it, of course, but it's nothing that you can, you know, not like we need this much paper, for example. Mr. Aguilar, have I hit the good notes for you?
Yes, thank you. And and I think just one key word that you used was unpredictability. I right now, we tried to look at the past data of the complaints that have been received by internal affairs and try to do some predictions from there. internal affairs and try to do some predictions from there as to how much we could set aside for investigations, for the hearing examiners, for the legal counsel, and potentially for this new element of mediation. So it it, we have a range of where it could look like, uh, but the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, I don't think it anticipated or contemplated these different layers of the the new ordinance that you have envisioned. And and I think once we have the system in place and we have a little bit more data and how many complaints we get, and we're going to be able to get a clearer picture.
And we hadn't really folded it in, but Mr. Aguilar, you also have provided us with the report that was it took me a second to realize, like, when we first got it, that it was from, it was the one we were expecting in June twenty twenty. And obviously, a lot of things have happened since then. But um, you went expediently and pulled that together. And I know that we haven't had the opportunity to kind of discuss that publicly. Um, but would you mind just kind of at a high level, just kind of weighing out some of some of the recommendations that you have there? Because I do think it's relevant to this discussion.
Sure. So that report was pursuant to a resolution that passed on November fourth, when you passed the original ordinance in twenty nineteen that um, established the board that we have currently. And at that time, the initial PCR B had um, recommended some auditing uh, activities for the department. And I I believe it was your intention, the council's intention then, to allow the executive director to uh, review that a little bit more thoroughly and provide some recommendations on audit. So that the report provided kind of a background as to uh, where we were then and where we have come since then, and what areas of priority did the uh, the council and the city should consider in terms of auditing activities. I tried to model it uh, and guide it with the uh, communications and the discussions that we're having in the city based on uh, the values and what they would like to see in the the issues of policing, and also the national discussions and the twenty first century policing. Uh, so I made some recommendations in the report about auditing, patrolling activities, audit in uh, special teams activities, which you received a comment about it at this meeting today. Um, and um, activities regarding like CPD interactions with mental health uh, individuals experiencing mental illnesses. And I I don't have the report uh, available, but that's essentially uh, what what the essence of the report was to to look at some of the very targeted activities of the department, see what we're doing and what we're doing well, where there are areas for improvement. And and there were categorizing in in ways that we can audit internally through the executive director or areas where we could and should probably look at contracting the audit in form.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just knew that some of that stuff that I had read last week when you sent that was just really relevant to this conversation. So thank you.
So in terms of the bonding disciplinary determination, I there was a, and I was trying to find um, the chart, but I think the last presentation from from a meeting with someone, it had that um, the PCR B could make recommendations. And I guess the chief of police could make, do more, change it more than two levels or something.
There was a draft at one point that had a provision like that, yes.
Okay.
That's not in there now.
Yeah.
And frankly, it got taken out in large part uh, because, well, two things. One was the objection from the chief of police, and Dr. Brackney didn't didn't like the idea. Number two, because uh, of this concern that you've got to have ba- basically, if you're going to have non-professionals, people who are on the PCR B without any particular experience or background in the way in which these depart, in which police departments get run, uh, why would we want to turn over the discipline power? Uh, why would the chief of police agree to something where the chief of police's power to run her own department was going to be restricted by people who didn't know as much as she did? Uh, that was a significant part of the discussion. Um, so that's, that that's why we came up with simply the recommendations. And one of the things to keep in mind is that all of these procedures can be changed. And if we, if we find that the way we've gone with something doesn't accomplish what we want to accomplish, then we can change them.
Okay, so could you um, or Lisa, someone answer? So so getting a subpoena from Circuit Court, how does that play into the role of whether that officers have some legal protections and may not have to participate willingly participate or participate at all? Is that? Okay.
So there there are two issues here. The the one issue that is a federal constitutional issue deals, the the case is called Garrity. This is one of the 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 parties went up to the US Supreme Court, was named Garrity. And the issue there was if a police officer is told either you cooperate with this investigation or you get fired, then that's a statement that is being given under compulsion, and that violates the Fifth Amendment. And so the answer is if police department want wants to have a discipline like that where they they want to say, yeah, if you, you you tell us what happened or you get fired, that statement can't be used against that person uh, in in court. And so that's, that's really the issue. The uh, the the statements that, and what we've written in here is that the statements couldn't be used against against them uh, in in terms of the discipline either. I think that's right. I I should check that because we've actually changed that once or twice. Mr. Aguilar, did you remember, you're more familiar with these issues? Probably than I am. You recall whether there's been, we've had some progression in the way in which we were handling these kinds of statements. Do you remember? Or is my question confusing to you? It was a lousy question. It was a lousy question. Now, what what I'm trying to remember, I should, I suppose I should look at it right now. I I think what we wound up saying about the Garrity decision, let's see, I've got a heading that says specifically just Garrity. The procedures section. Yeah, the board may not compel a statement from any department employee. What that means is that the board can't say to somebody, you've got to tell us what happened or else. And the reason is that under Garrity, we don't, the the board, the only, the only entity, the only person who could uh, make that statement of you've got to tell us or else is somebody in the direct chain of command over that officer. So because the board doesn't have the power to fire the officer, the board also doesn't have the power to say, you have to tell us.
Um, so let's see, what else I have, so I can open it up to someone else. So there were, um, what is this, page one? Um, like purpose, I thought that it needed to include establish. At the bottom, it said the purpose of the board is to increase and maintain trust between and amongst the Shawsville Police Department. And I think establish needs to go there. I did on page two. I have some questions about three, but I think I'll wait for Lisa's responses for some of these. On page three, number.
Under paragraph C three?
Yeah, C three. Yes, that one. On D three, I don't, I don't, based on the way Shawsville works, that I think we need to take that out. I just, or maybe we don't need to take it out, but I don't know. Like, again, this is where I think procedures kind of come in. But how are you defining that? Are we basing that just on evidence submitted, like reviewing body cam footage, things like that? If we go into where it's just, um, you've written this down, and if it's a word of mouth and someone says, and then you I I just don't know how you prove it. So that's um, the question I had there. I had a about the circuit court subpoenas, I had just what law authorizes it and how and the benefit to the city. So I had some questions there. Um, on page four, G, I didn't understand why this is something that would need to go to the like that you would need to get a subpoena for. And we're at the point where our executive director and the board is saying that the city manager is withholding information. Why isn't that, uh, why can't counsel just step in and say, give the information? Okay, I'll keep going. Um.
I'm writing them down.
There was a question about the voting membership, but it's not on page four, so it's somewhere. On E, on page six, conflicts of interest. I think that just leaves it open to interpretation at last line. Because thinking of the last summer and how many people of an incident like that, you know, I don't even want to speak of it, but incident like that happening, and there are a lot of people who emotions would be attached to that. That doesn't mean that they can't, like, who gets to determine whether an individual, just because you may be passionate about something, doesn't mean that you can't be objective. So I just think that.
Let me just say, that's, that's something, that paragraph actually is something that I revised uh, fairly extensively after comments from Ms. Robertson. Uh, the standard at at the beginning, I mean, the the standard of uh, that no board member should participate under circumstances in which the objectivity of the board member could reasonably be questioned is a fairly common standard for recusal or self-recusal. Uh, or if somebody shouldn't be, for example, serve on a jury because their objectivity might reasonably be questioned. They putting the word reasonably in there just says, just sort of guarantees that somebody has a frivolous objection, we don't have to honor that frivolous objection. Uh, but if it's, if it's a reasonable objection, that's a different matter. I think in the procedures that we drafted, uh, there is a a provision in there that says that recusal, uh, if if somebody wants a member of the board recused, uh, then they have to say so at the time, you know, before the decision gets made. You don't get to object after the decision gets made. Uh, and at that point, either the member recuses him or herself, or else the board could decide whether that person should be recused from that particular case.
So what is the revision?
See if I've got that. Hold on. It would read, uh, no board member shall participate in any matter before the board under circumstances in which the objectivity of the board member could reasonably be questioned, including without limitation, the consideration of a complaint of someone who is a family member. Additionally, and for purposes of the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interests Act, the board shall be deemed a governmental agency, and each board member shall be an officer as those terms are defined in Virginia Code Section two point two dash three one oh one. All board members shall comply with the requirements of the Virginia State and Local Government Conflicts of Inter, Conflict of Interests Act. As far as the subtleties of that, I'd have to defer to Ms. Robertson.
And um, I had some thoughts around the interview process for board members and the participation of either like board chair or not currently, but the chair of the board and the ED. Um, I know that opens it up, but that is something that I just had in my notes that I just think for what we are seeing, we want this board to be able to do, it may just be helpful to include them in that process, even if it's just initial recommendation, you know, the initial process and then council makes the final decision, but that they are able to give a recommendation.
Are you?
Board appointments?
Huh?
You're referring to the board appointments?
Yeah.
The in in terms of the board.
And I know that's different than the process, but I'm thinking of what we are asking this board to do. That it just may be helpful, but it's something that, again, I I know this is the first time I'm bringing it up, but it's something that I thought about when I was reviewing this. So.
Well, if we think about other boards and commissions, we certainly have cases where the staff would make weigh in um, in a number of ways, like there's applications. Obviously, it's just something for our consideration when we go into deliberations. I feel like you're describing something different just now.
Yeah, no, I am. I was, um, what I'm describing is they actually sit in on the interview process with the counselors. Which is different than we normally do, but just as something for you all.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, that's.
I guess. Go ahead.
I said, that's something that I think I am correct in saying that there is no other board person for whom, if we're going to make an appointment, that other members of that board to get sit in on the interview.
Yeah. I know. I just don't know how, we were, we have been talking about the expertise needed. I'm thinking about the like, community members who are appointed. And I, and I don't know how, maybe, you know, people can just say we would prefer, but I think having um, the members sit on it and make a decision based on hearing the interviews for what the oversight that this board will now pro- provide, if this is approved, would be helpful. But again, ponder it, but that's.
Okay.
Engaging the staff member, in this case, Mr. Aguilar, whoever serves in that capacity. But I, it would be, I'd be hard pressed to see it working out without any actions in the future for another, another appointed board member. But that's just my, you're just, I hadn't thought about this before, so.
Yeah, and that's why I wasn't, I'm just giving my list. I have some other things, but I think whatever Lisa's response would answer those, I'm just leaving those out. And these were just kind of, you know, wording and, you know, you know, big minor, I think, minor stuff. The other thing is, I don't think we should mandate rattle loans. There were some members who expressed that they were not interested in doing rattle loans. This is the initial PCR B, and there were some members who were very open to it. So if that's a part of the training, I do think, because not everybody has the same experience with being in a police car. And so some community members, it may trigger them, and I would not want to do that. So that was concerning for me. That within six months of appointment that they would do it. And.
Just say, virtually every ordinance I've seen has a ride along requirement.
I understand that, but I just think that somebody should be able to opt out if they would like opt out of it.
And the other question is whether, just to use the example of jurors, if we think of these people as in essence sitting like jurors, a juror who has such a visceral emotional reaction to a case, even in the abstract, even to the issue in the abstract, can't sit as a juror.
I don't think that the fact that you may have been like tossed in the back of a van that people had pissed in in the past, and you may not want to get back into a CPD vehicle, that means I'm just giving an example that I'm aware of. And you may not want to get back into a CPD vehicle. That means I'm just giving an example that I'm aware of, that that doesn't mean that you. Shouldn't be able to be on the board. Like you just don't know. It like, we are talking about community members and I'm speaking specifically of them. You don't know what their past histories with officers um are. And I know sitting in the front seat is different than sitting in the backseat, you know, and maybe, but. Depending on who they are sitting beside, there may be officers on the force that will, people will be more open to ride-alongs than others. But I just think mandating it, if I think we should have a put um provision here that people can opt out of. And I don't think this should exclude them if they, i- if this is a part of the training and they're not comfortable doing it, I don't think that it should exclude them. Um, okay.
Make the notes.
Oh, that's one I stop. Sorry for using P I S N C D.
I had talked through most of the stuff with Lloyd last week, and I think I we've already spoken to the one item that. Um, I felt like was pretty loose, which was around just who can make the file, the complaint, and we've already addressed that.
So Michael, you were a part of a lot of these discussions. Are there things that the concerns of yours that we didn't end up addressing? Or address the wrong way?
Be more just small details um. But overall, I feel like it's in, it's in a pretty good place. In particular, one of the most important things to me was. Ensuring that in the hybrid model that the independent investigatory function is maintained. And has a real part of the structure, and I think that is very much a part of it. Um. And so overall, I mean, I think there are smaller details, including things like, you know, the police ride-alongs, some of the comments that um. City attorney made, but big picture in terms of the overall structure, I feel. Pretty comfortable that it's a very strong and independent uh structure in the ordinance, but.
How do you feel about the question, who ought to be able to bring a complaint?
I'm not sure um. You know, I'd be curious to think about that more and have some initial more discussion. I guess my initial thought is that um. You know, I could see there being opportunities where someone is able to bring a complaint, who wasn't the person um. Who had a negative interaction with CPD, that there are instances where that could be of use um. But. Quite frankly, I'm 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 not sure what is usually the the best practice for other. Uh civilian oversight boards across the country on that, or if there's a way to allow it, but limit it, so you know, you're not just, you know, getting. You know, a flood of complaints if the individual who is subject to that abuse does not actually want that brought forward to the the review board, so. I don't know.
Okay. Did I? Confess, I don't know what what Ms. McGill thinks.
Did I miss Lisa's comments? Cause you just did, I not, did you all just get them and I, I don't remember seeing them.
Uh she sent them to me and to Michael over the weekend, and I was trying to incorporate them during the day today, but I ran out of time. If we hadn't had the afternoon session, I'd have had them done.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
So it seems like we're actually getting pretty close. So are we in a situation where? You know, obviously, we've had some discussion here. There's some tweaks. Um, obviously, Ms. Robertson's pieces are coming in. Then we'll be in a position where we want to just, we'll be able to kind of formally vote on it by the next meeting. Understanding though, that also the PCRB will be meeting one time in between now and then.
Uh I I should back up a second. I I realize that Vice Mayor McGill actually has has told me how she feels on the. Uh complainant versus any old person issue, and she also would like to have it restricted to complainants and direct witnesses. Um, so uh. Anyway, now it sounds like we've got three votes in, at least in favor of that. I'm kind of. I haven't really decided how I was come, would come down on it, but I could certainly live with that version. So why don't I go ahead and and put that tweak into into the the draft that we would consider next time? I note, by the way, that Mr. Mendez is on the call. I wonder if uh he would have any, anything he'd like to tell us at this point.
And just so I won't forget, if we can have this um draft and Lika Lisa's um. Tweaks, recommendations by, like, not. Wait until the council meeting notices if if we can get that by the end of this week, or at least earlier next week, so that I can have time.
Not a problem. I see Mr. Mendez.
When is the um PCRB meeting on the?
Thursday.
Okay, so after that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, the only thing I have to say is I'm really delighted at how constructive uh this process has been. Uh counselors, Snuck and Payne and and all the other participants. Uh I think there's been a real meeting of the minds and a a lot of these important. Um, details have been addressed and I think we're, we're all very eager to move forward.
So is this something? Thing that you would expect that your group would discuss again, though, at this coming meeting?
Uh, there is currently an item uh on the agenda. That is entitled status of the ordinance operating procedures, and so there would be a discussion. Uh but it basically, as far as we can tell, it's just gonna be a report of where we are.
Yeah, I I think that we're, we're pretty much in sync on this. I don't think that we're, we're too far apart in any event. Um. I know uh Mr. Aguilar sent me a little note saying he had three observations. Happy to have them. If you'd like to share them with us right now, Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you, and and sorry if I, it's too late to to be.
Not a problem.
Now, I was just wanted to give it a fresh review over the weekend and just think practically how these things work. So uh for what was the legislative intent behind the juvenile records? I understand and appreciate the. Um, the confidentiality, but but in terms of, this is, there's two reasons why I think that. That could potent- potentially have barriers in investigation, but I just wanted to better understand why that was being um. Uh safeguarded the juvenile records portion.
Um, Ms. Robertson, is there a particular set of legal requirements that we're addressing there? A reason to, a a specific legal reason to not. Uh be considering juvenile records. Right, I I I have a general sense that we're not supposed to be discussing juvenile records. But I couldn't say why specifically.
The state statute that prohibits a law enforcement agency from sharing. Uh law enforcement records involving juveniles, uh except with a a list of people that is in the statute and. In order to get access to those sorts of things, even um. Even a lot of people, you have to go to the juvenile court and get a court order for release, so. Um, I don't have the citation in front of me, but there's a state statute that restricts the sharing of that information.
Okay, I I think for that matter, actually, there's also a provision that says. Uh that we can't even share adult criminal records, that there are specific statutes. That allow the sharing of adult criminal records only under certain circumstances. So, for example. I know that I can't get the criminal record of a witness in a particular case. I I can't have it provided to me. I am allowed to look at it, but I can't receive the piece of paper. Little little exceptions like that that we run afoul of.
Right, so there's, there's some statutes that restrict things. Right now, what most of the information we're talking about is information. That is under the discretionary control of the city manager, the police chief and and um the city in general.
Okay.
And then that's helpful. I was just thinking in terms of investigation where you may have an officer that made a decision. Based on his knowledge of a particular juvenile's record and. And then he makes a statement to that effect during the investigation with IA, or if it's an independent investigation. How do we corroborate that without seeing what juvenile records the officer may or may have, may or may not have known about? So would there be a potential for the uh the PCOB to apply for subpoena in that particular instance, or would they still be restricted?
We'd have to look at the juvenile court statute, which is the governing statute. But the the other thing we can do when you're getting to the procedures um or the standard operating procedure about. The sharing of records, there may be some way that um. Um, some info, you know, i- you may not be able to disclose who the juvenile is or any sort of information that would identify them, but you. Might be able to share general information about how an investigation was conducted or. How a statement was taken, that sort of thing. So um we can, we can revisit it in in um looking at the operating procedures. And then um tomorrow, um Mr. Aguilar, I can share with you the state statute that I'm talking about.
Thank you, that'd be helpful. And then just two quick things with the subpoenas, uh Council Snook and Council and Mayor um. What is the, I I was just thinking about the practicability and feasibility, especially if we're. Uh if there's a time limit on these investigations, on having to go to the board for them to have a vote on a subpoena. Uh would that potentially delay the investigation? How do you see that in practice when? Uh a lot of these investigations, they're very time sensitive. We're not necessarily gonna get investigations all the time where somebody files right after the incident, so if we have to preserve any evidence. Uh do we want to add that extra procedure where the board has to have a a meeting? Uh to decide whether they want to apply for subpoena, or should that be up to the discretion of the investigator or the executive director?
Interesting question. I I wonder if it could, if we could make, if we could provide for like an email ballot of. Of the board members or something to give that authorization.
Now, I don't think that's a good idea. I think that's sort of decision-making outside of FOIA, but um.
Okay.
We can take a look at whether or not the, again, in the operating procedures. You know, we can take a look at that and and decide, you know, whether the board wants to generally confer. Authority on the executive director under a set, a particular set of circumstances, you know. The operating procedures could say the executive director on behalf of the board can request a subpoena under these. Circumstances, and you could list, you know, timeliness could be a factor, that sort of thing. Um, but um. Usually, the the subpoena request would be made in the name of the board.
Again, just my last, uh just thought, observation was on the annual report. Um, it is uh scheduled for April fifteenth in the draft. Uh would it be better to be aligned with the? Uh departure of the chair, so that could be the chair's kind of report to the board. Uh it, cause I believe they start their rotation in January, so they potentially submit the report in December as he's leaving his term. Uh that's just something to consider. I didn't know uh if from the, in April fifteen, or I don't know what the thought process was behind that day, if it had any significance.
Uh I think you glorify it by referring to it as a thought process. I'm not sure we had a particular thought in mind.
That's scary.
Candid. No, I I don't know that there is a particular thought that's saying, gee, we ought to be doing it in in April or August or any other time. Uh the one thought that I had had. And simply, if we're gonna be doing it by calendar year, yeah, I mean, you probably ought to wait for the end of the calendar year. If you're doing calendar year and everything that that happened through December thirty first, you can't issue that report on December fifteenth. April fifteenth would simply allow, I mean, we we could move it up a little bit if if there was a concern about that. Um, I I just figured give everybody enough time to to get it done. So that it doesn't have to be like, hey, I'm cramming in a an exam and then a term paper all at the end of the semester and. You know, Christmas holidays are here and so on. If there's a time. Time that would make better sense, uh if it would be better to be earlier or later than April fifteenth, I'm not ready to that thing.
Yeah, keep in mind that also every two years you have rotations on city councils, so. Um, if you need to get through the end of the year before you can do an annual report. Um, you know, January may also not be the best month to present that type of report, so. December and January are often pretty, pretty busy months of the year.
Well, that, that's something we can think about. We can, if if folks have have uh have been opinions one way or the other. I, just from my own experience now, in the last couple of years, I would be inclined to not ask anybody. Do anything before April fifteenth, if possible, because that's when the budget gets finalized, so. The city activity in general kind of slows down, except for budget activity, seems to me. Anyway. Okay, so um. If there are no other substantive discussions. I guess what I would suggest is, I I think that the only real substantive issue we've talked about this evening. Is this question of who would have standing to file a complaint. I think we can tweak that language. At least, as I said before, I'm personally everything you've suggested, I've just gone ahead and typed into the. To the version that I'm working with. Um, and so I I suspect that the final analysis you'll, you will find very familiar. Um, and then if we can get the final word from any more comments out of the PCRB. Uh then I can, uh I can finalize it over the weekend. Bill, I can shoot it to you if you want to take a look one last time at it. And then by Monday, be ready to to submit it for for further review, if that sounds like a plan.
I would just, that counselor's review, watch the. PCRB meeting to make sure that.
Right.
Thing that we need to think about there and um. And if we can get all the material, then that'll, I think, speed up things for the.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there a draft for the, I mean, have you all, do you have anything you're writing yet for operating procedure?
We do. I I don't know, Bill, uh what kind of shape it's in since the last time we looked at it. Couple of months ago, but yeah.
Oh, it's, it's still basically limited to uh meeting procedures. Uh and now what has to happen is that since we don't have MOUs, we have to define. Uh like information sharing protocols of the procedures for receiving and processing complaints. But that is, I don't think that's gonna be a huge deal. Uh, you know, it's not gonna add too much to it, and we can get on it right away.
That would be a a draft of what we would suggest that uh basically what we would suggest to the city manager. And Bill, I don't know whether you were on when I started talking about all of this, but uh what Lisa had sent to me was something that. Basically said, we shouldn't be having MOUs between different sections of the city government. But you, that that should be regarded as the city manager promulgating standard operating procedures. So we call it that. I think that that solves the problem of of the city manager and city manager's role and and so on.
Yeah.
But obviously, we would suggest those procedures city manager.
Yep. In the morning.
Okay.
I just, again, I've sent it an email, but I just want to think, obviously, this work group has had a heavy lift and, um, you know, Lloyd and and Bill specifically. Um for kind of helping us to kind of wrangle through to get to this point. I think a lot of tremendous progress has been made this fall. The smaller working group has kind of. Um, been working through these details. Um, and obviously, with Mr. Aguilar joining the organization as well as the support of Ms. Marshall, so thank you to all of you for. For the heavy lift here.
Yeah. Okay. I got my marching orders.
Me too.
Thanks. Thanks.
Next up, we have um, an ordinance approving the rezoning of land at Zero Nassau Street. Um, from R two, U two family residential university to R three multifamily residential. Subject to preferred development conditions and it's the first of two readings.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Ophley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. Mayor, City Council, tonight you will hold a discussion in the first reading for proposed rezoning of Zero Nassau Street. The proposal covers tax map parcels six one zero zero seven nine six zero zero. Six one zero zero seven nine seven zero zero. And a portion of six one zero zero seven nine zero zero. And is located on the eastern side of Nassau Street at the intersection of Florence Road. Justin Shimp uh with Shimp Engineering and Nicole Scro, representing the owner Franklin Street Land Trust the third. Has submitted a rezoning application pursuant to City Code Section thirty four forty one. Seeking a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district classification of Zero Nassau Street. The applicant proposes to change the zoning classification of the subject property from the existing R two residential two family. To R three residential multifamily with proffers and development plan. Comprehensive land use plan at the time this went to planning commission called for low density residential. The following key aspects of the development plan include two five unit multifamily buildings. Three one bedroom units and two two bedroom units in each building. Not more than ten dwelling units on the site, a central parking between the two buildings. An outdoor recreation area behind the south, southernmost building. A greenhouse behind the recreation area and new sidewalks along the south side of Nassau Street. In addition to the development plan, the applicant has proffered that the design height, density and other. Such characteristics of the projects are remain essentially the same and all material aspects. Except where they conflict with city zoning. The height of the building, the building or structures located on the subject property shall not exceed thirty five feet in height. And height is to be measured in accordance with City Code Section thirty four one 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 zero. The permitted uses in the subject property may be used only for the uses listed. Um, and they are residential and related uses by right, which is residential dwellings at a density of one. Of a density of twenty one dwelling units per acre. Um, specifically, single family dwellings, single family attached dwellings, townhouses, two family dwellings, multifamily dwellings. Or residential treat, treatment facilities from one to eight residents are by right. Accessory buildings, structures and uses um are allowed provisional use permit. Other uses by right would be utility lines um and by special use permit, uh, utility facilities. On November ninth, the planning commission and city council held a joint public hearing on this matter. Floodplain impacts, accessibility of the playground to the community. And the size of the units were all discussion points from the, from the planning commission and council. The council wanted to ensure the proposed development would meet all floodplain requirements. And wanted clarification on who could use the playground and greenhouse. During the public hearing, two members of the public spoke and expressed the following. The city, the city should not allow development within the floodplain and should do more to protect the existing trees. Also, the city needs more housing and this development would benefit the city. Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning to City Council. This concludes my report. The applicant has uh prepared a short presentation. After the presentation, staff and the applicant will be available for questions. I would also like to note that Mr. Tony Edwards, the city's floodplain administrator, is also available tonight to answer questions. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Nicole Scrow if you want to give your presentation.
Thanks, Matt. Um. Um, should I? Okay, I'm waiting for the presentation to come up or am I sharing my screen?
Um, share your screen.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Second, second. Um, so uh, this is going to be a very similar presentation to the planning commission public hearing. Uh, so I'm sorry for the counselors who are there. I'm going to be repeating myself a bit. Um, I'm Nicole Scrow. Um, I'm the applicant with Justin Shimp. Um, for the sake of transparency, um, I know Justin especially represents other applicants many times. Um, before this body, in this instance, unlike others, um, he's actually the owner um of the property. So the property is located in Belmont. It's in the Carlton um side of Belmont, the Belmont neighborhood. From Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association, it's um on Nassau Street. Um, this isn't a great picture, um, because a lot has happened on Nassau Street as far as new construction goes. Um, but the site is right where um Florence comes out onto Nassau. Um, this is just a close up. Um, so it is uh, as far as amenities goes, you're, you're right by Reeves Park. Um, there's a new international school um at this site where my mouse is. Um. Going to keep going. Uh, the current zoning is R two. So by right, you can build three uh duplexes. So that's six total units. Um, so this is a overview of what's uh been built recently on the property. The Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust has built two duplexes. And Habitat next door has also built two duplexes. That's right here and here. So right, this is where Florence comes out. So this is where the property is. And this is where the proposed two five unit structures are. Um, Justin is building, um, they're currently under construction, two duplexes next to the five plexes. Um, by right, here are the pictures of those, the siding is now on them. Um, then when you continue along Nassau towards Linden, you meet some single family detached houses. Um, and then you meet the project that came before council several years ago. Um, and then you meet another by right project, um, an apartment complex. Um, that hasn't been built yet, but it's by right. Um. And then you also continue along Linden Avenue and there are some apartment complexes as well. So there's a variety of housing types along this street. And uh, these, the duplexes that Habitat and the Community Land Trust, Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust built. As well as the two duplexes that are being built by rights. So all of the duplexes on this street. Were part of the same site plan originally that was approved in two thousand sixteen. So that site plan is currently still effective. Um, and uh, it envisioned, um, as approved, uh, continuing duplexes. Where we're proposing to put five plexes instead. So we're going from six units that are approved under the um site plan. And we're going to ten. Um, and we're limiting those ten units. Um, the, we're limiting their bedroom count. So there's actually less bedrooms than what could be built by right. Um, we're also, um, so here's a massing diagram. Um, so we're also limiting the footprint. So it's just a little bit wider um than the duplexes that are currently under construction here. Um, though Habitat is actually, those units are wider, um, other than longer. Anyway, the footprint is fair, of the buildable footprint is fairly similar to what can be put there. And built there by right. Um, and. Not only that, but so there's the site plan that was approved. Um, and then you also, to build in this area. There's a floodplain kind of towards the back. Um. And the next picture probably shows it better. Yeah. So the floodplain is this um blue line here, dotted blue line. Um, if you look on the FEMA maps, um, it's kind of difficult to see because it doesn't show you the elevation. Based on the letter of map, the most recent letter of map revision. So if you look up the FEMA map, it shows it over here. Um, but the elevation is actually changed um back in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. And so the elevation is actually um three twenty four to three twenty five in this area. And so that's kind of towards the back of the site. Um, and then in addition to that, there's some fill that will be placed on the property. And that will bring the lots um and the buildings out of the floodplain completely. And the ability to put the, that fill there, that dirt has already been approved. So that dirt and the disturbance of this area and this building footprint will go there regardless. It's just a matter of whether that building footprint will include um six units or ten. Um, and the idea behind this was in building the duplexes. Kind of came across some increase in construction costs and probably going to hit a rent around twenty one hundred. Isn't terrible for a three bedroom unit, but to get the rents lower. Um, we would like to build one bedroom units that are smaller. And more of them, so we can hit rents around eleven hundred and thinking it through a little bit more. The planning commission, I'd set around like a little bit below thirteen hundred. So we're looking for rents between eleven hundred and thirteen hundred. So that, that hits about sixty to seventy um area median income. Um, there are some um amenity requirements by going to R three rather than having existing R two. So that's another positive. We can have a little playground area that's required with R two amenities. And um, you have to have some sort of weather protected area. And so that's going to be this greenhouse. Um, Justin has one in his um, on his property in Nelson County. Um, this is what it looks like, but it isn't exactly his. Um. And that is all I have. So um, Justin's on this call this time. Um, so we're here to answer any questions you have. Um, thank you for your time. I know it's late.
Nicole, could you just back up to um the slide that shows land, the footprint? And could you just again, just kind of reiterate? So right now, what you, what could be done here? Kind of occupies a very similar footprint to what's being proposed?
Yes, so um, you'll see this unit right here. That's a footprint of the duplexes that are under construction. Um, so the footprint of those are fifteen thirty six. So that's the footprint. Um, the footprint here is um sixteen eighty. Um, so it's three hundred more gross square footage. Um. And this is a kind of amassing of it. Um, so it's a little bit wider.
And the original plan, if there was three duplexes, then you would just have three of these structures side by side by side.
Yep.
Which would be harmonious with whatever's around it. Okay.
Yes, so this actually allows, and having two instead of three allows for um less pressure for on-street parking. Because we can have this parking over here, this parking pad, and we can also have more room between the habitat units. And these five plexes, so we can have some more green space there. Yep.
The, what calculations did you use to determine the AMI levels?
Um. I use, so this is. And I took this from a. Go right to the site. I have it all. Um. So that's FMR. So sorry, I was probably playing it around here. So I took this from. HUD, so um, and then I took a. You know, that's your. Annual salary, of course, what's your monthly salary and then multiplied it by point three, which is, you know, thirty percent. Um, cost for housing and that's how I got to. Family of two or family of one. Um. Got to the AMI percentages. It's an approximation, so it's not perfect. Um.
And so um, just uh, again, point to ponder, but it, that. The thirty percent ideally includes housing expenses, so utilities. Are those things included in the rents?
Um, it's not. Um. Well, it's not. And, and so my, my approximation of rent is a range. Um, and these are new constructions, so your utilities will be lower. But you're right, my eleven hundred to thirteen hundred does not include utilities. Yeah.
I'm pretty sure this is the case, just to confirm, you know, the, this site, there's no. Uh, it's just vacant at the moment. So unlike the other site for the, those proposed several years ago, there's not any, you know. No displacement is even possible. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Um, and then the second question is, you know, is, is people brought up, um, you know, what, what is the plan? Um, and expectation in terms of the. Um. How do I anticipate, you know, the impacts of the floodplain, including not just the floodplain itself, but you know. With climate change, you know, FEMA's flood maps are, you know, I think generally recognized, not always up to date. And there could be flooding impacts beyond just what they're um. In the FEMA floodplain, just sort of how you anticipate, you know, handling that and how it compares to the construction. Um. Of the Habitat Community Land Trust homes, which are also built um and that, that street.
Yeah, um, I mean, I can't say too much about this. Um, Justin knows much more than I do. Um, I know that our site um kind of conceptual plan does not show some of the mitigation measures. That will be required such as permeable pavers and a bios and or a bioswale. So there'll be some sort of required onsite mitigation, which those habitat units, when you drive. You, you drive through the drive-through in between the units and then pull over, they have permeable pavers, something like that will be required. But um, Justin, I don't know if you want to speak more to um the floodplain and climate change. I think that's a fair question and concern. Um, he knows more than I do. Um. Enough year round.
Sure, yeah. Justin Shimp, the engineering owner of this particular property. So, yeah, I think you're right. So what we do is, first of all, the folks we were talking earlier, don't take into account that we're going to put. What we have on the one set of how we will put six or eight feet of dirt. And where that could have floodplain area currently is, which basically elevates the structures out of the floodplain. Let me go a little further and I, I think I have something like three or four feet of cushions over the floodplain limit. So as a matter of practice, you know, if the FEMA minimum is one foot, we would try to go above that by some percentage. As a, a margin of error, not knowing what the future may hold exactly. Um, and a little cushion on that. So we're, we're very close to like a five hundred year floodplain elevation, which is. A very, very low flood risk uh, this particular location. So essentially, it's engineered fill and study of the, you know, the maps and the actual flood studies to figure out what a real number is. To give us some, not just the minimum, but a cushion above that. And that's, that's how we do it.
And then a third question, and I, I generally just do not remember this from the planning commission discussion. Um, is what, what was the discussion around the access to um the playground in the greenhouse, particularly? The, the playground.
Yeah, that was a great question. Um, at the time, I wasn't sure if there was some sort of requirement for them to be exclusive to the development. And um, I believe Lisa Roberson said that there doesn't need to be any exclusivity. Um, so we'd be welcome to having that um, that street and that community. Have access to that greenhouse and that playground. Yeah.
So who would.
Or sorry, just, yeah, I know there's, there's Habitat Community Land Trust homes that um, I think already have families living in them. Or at least some of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that's what I, I, I guess I was kind of assuming if there are one bedroom units, that it would be a playground for the community. Because who is likely?
Yeah, um, so they'll be rented out. The, the five unit structures will be rented out. And those, the tenants in those units will certainly have access to the playground. Um, but I guess we'll be managing the playground and the greenhouse, so we could also allow access to those amenities. Um, as the manager, we could allow the habitat and the other units to also access those. That's all.
So the idea for the playground, you all presented that, because I haven't watched the planning commission meeting on this. Um, so.
Is required to have some of these amenities when you get this kind of upzoning?
So, so, okay, so it would have to be for the community if we're talking about one bedroom units. Because there wouldn't be kids renting apartments.
Um, well, there we, there, we certainly could have kids in the, in the, those units regardless. It is required. So um, but yeah, we, we do want people um who have kids and are around that area to, to have access to them. So um. Yeah, that'd be great.
So is there a concept? So is there a concept for the playground? Or is it just that there will be a playground?
Just that there will be a playground. I know Justin's helped with the design of Wild Rock, which is that nature playscape. So there's some some ideas from that. But no, right now it is just kind of a designated area. It's not designed.
So Lisa, I would want to know how that would be because I don't think that based on one bedroom efficiency style units or whatever, that they would have to necessarily. I don't know what is required to be in a playground because it's required, but I would hope that it is more geared towards the community needs versus who is likely to be in a tenant in a development like this? And how can that be ensured?
There are combination of one and two bedroom, Nicole, correct? You're like
Yes. So there's one and two bedrooms. There's three bedrooms next door, but I think Mayor Walker makes a good point. You know, there's a lot of families in that community. And so it's not been designed yet. And we would love to engage the community and see what's what's needed and what's wanted and make sure it's utilized. So but yeah, there are a variety of housing types and sizes along that street. So you get a wide variety of people and families there. Having walked in and knocked on doors a lot there. So it's kind of cool.
Yeah. In in terms of how you ensure that specific things are provided, you would you would look first to any proper development conditions and then also whether or not a particular development was going to have some sort of declaration that has common areas or some sort of covenants that articulate what specific areas will be used for and how they'll be maintained.
Could I ask some flood-related questions? One thing that concerns me a little bit is that if you build in the floodplain by raising the dirt level underneath your building, you are you're limiting the size of the channel. And you are therefore necessarily raising the level of your flood stage. And that's one of the problems in development in floodplains overall is that even if you're even if you built your building on artificially constructed hill that is otherwise in the floodplain, what you've basically done is to push your problem onto everybody else's land. How how does that? How do we factor that into the question of a margin of safety, either for you or for adjoining properties?
Yeah, that's you want to take that?
Yeah. So there's actually a pretty, this this property is really unique. And that, well, first of all, you're correct, right? If I if I'm along a river channel and I place fill, it sort of limits the capacity, the carrying capacity channel, and the elevation goes up. But this particular instance is actually a backwater flood from the Rivana. So we actually don't have water coming down to flood this site should ever flood. It's coming up. And so because of that, it's a storage area. And so the effect of the fill is I mean, it it could be measured in, I don't know, thousands upon thousands of an inch maybe. But it's it's extremely small because you're not affecting, as you as you pointed out, there is a condition with this fill could have a more immediate impact on adjoining property, but it's not this one, just because of the unique characteristics that's flooded from the downstream direction.
So you're not going to end up with it with it being a dam in essence?
Correct. Right. Exactly. We are not causing the restriction of the flow with this because it's just the water's pulling up backwards, flowing down the Rivana and backing up.
Are the other, like the land trust duplexes and so on, are those, do they have the same flood floodplain status as this property?
They do. They were all they were all fill was placed, survey is done, they were removed from the floodplain.
Okay. And so basically, I mean, I guess question, are you doing anything different in that respect from what the neighbors have already done?
No, exact same process.
If you were to build the six units that you are entitled to build by right under present zoning, would you have to do the same thing?
Yes, and actually maybe even a little more of it because I have a little less space under the buy right towards the habitat lots. So I might actually place a little more fill again. I don't know if it's a quantifiable amount, but it is more in the case of like the sort of buy right, just because I'm going from three structures to two.
Yeah, okay. Because I'll be honest, my my only real concern with this is is the notion of building in the floodplain. I mean, Charlottesville, I remember during the time when Hurricane Camille and Agnes came through in the 60s and 70s. And we used to joke that 100-year floods came once a year and 500-year floods came every five years. I don't know whether they even use the same terminology in in the floodplain maps these days, but the one thing that we can reasonably anticipate with climate change is that floods are going to become more of a problem, not less of a problem. And so I'm frankly, that's the thing I'm trying to worry. I'm trying to weigh is whether the advantage of having more frankly, more smaller units, which I think is a good thing for the mix in housing in the community as a whole, whether that is outweighed by the the difficulties that come from some encroachment into the floodplain. That's that's where I am. I'm not quite sure how I decided.
To that end, I just because we have to have our staff member here, Mr. Edwards, I would be just kind of curious to hear his perspective on this overall, if he would be willing to share.
Yes. Justin's correcting the approach that has been taken in the past to elevate these sites out of the 1% or regulated flood elevation, the base flood elevation. The city goes one step further in its ordinance that we require a one-foot free board above that. And as I understood from their presentation, they're looking to even elevate even higher than that. One thing we need to keep in mind about floodplains, there's there's designated sections of floodplain. One is a floodway, which is the main channel of flow that is required to remain open and free of to flow to allow that 1% regulated flood elevation to be conveyed through that area. What we're talking about here is development in the, what I would refer to as a floodway fringe, which is allowed by flood ordinance for the city of Charlottesville. But it does require a special permit. And in that permit review process, we look at all of these things that could potentially be obstructions, unnecessary obstructions perhaps, like all the mechanical equipment and everything that causes that house to function properly has to be elevated as well, not just the living space areas. Hopefully that gets to what you were after.
Yeah, I think that a lot of our questions are around just the difference between what is allowable by right versus what is being proposed here. And it does seem like they're pretty comparable. And if someone, at least what Mr. Schimpf was saying, that it could even be more favorable in terms of just the amount that it's encroaching in these areas with what's being proposed.
Yeah, we would we would be looking closely at all those elements. They mentioned the playground area, any other structures that would be in that floodway hazard or not floodway, but the flood hazard area. All of that would be part of that review to make sure that meets the building code requirements as well as the flood ordinance requirement.
Any other questions? So this is a no vote. And is there agreement to move the item to the 20th, the meeting on the 20th?
I think so.
Okay. And I would just ask for these items that may be the one before now, just Vice Mayor McGill is not here for us to not place them on consent that we put them back on the agenda in case there's any discussion. For the PCRB, we're going to have that more discussion. But if there are any you know, if she has any comments and questions. And as for this, if we can make sure that whatever the level of engagement for the community, for the playground, that that's and whatever other potential influence we can have on that, if that can be clearly stated and there was something else that I just lost. And if you all could look at the AMIs again with understanding of the utility piece of that.
I certainly agree. And I do know that Council McGill, a lot of her questions are going to be around the floodplain and the environmental factors as well. So
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a resolution approving the request to waive the critical slope requirements of City Code Section 34 1120B to allow construction of a duplex at Coleman Court, Zero Coleman, the tax map 49 parcels, one 1112.2. It's one reading.
So thank you, Mayor Walker and members of City Council. I am Danan O'Connell, City Planner with NDS. And tonight I'll be presenting an application from Greater Charlottesville Habitat for Humanity, requesting a waiver from Section 34-1120B of the City Code, which is the Critical Slope Ordinance, to allow for by right construction of a single-family attached structure with two residential units, along with supporting infrastructure. Proposed structure will be located on two lots, tax map parcel 49011200 and 490112200. These two lots are located at the northeast corner of Coleman Court and Coleman Street and are currently undeveloped. And I shall note that these lots were previously divided into six lots, but essentially been consolidated into two lots with the approval of a boundary line adjustment this year. The proposed duplex will be located on both lots with a common property line dividing both residential units. The improvements specific to areas where the critical slopes would be impacted is shown in the Critical Slope Exhibit linked in your packet materials and includes portions of lots one and two, sanitary sewer and waterline placement and a new private driveway for both units. The proposed duplex will be developed by right in line with the established R2 zoning for both parcels. The proposed building footprint will be almost entirely outside of the critical slope areas. And impacts to the critical slopes will come primarily from the new access easement needed to connect the building site to the street, sanitary sewer and waterline placement and associated graining on both lots. Two trees will be removed to accommodate this development. However, the applicant indicates that stormwater runoff and erosion will not be significantly affected by the development. Alternative site layouts, we're unlikely to reduce impact to critical slope areas as the building area for both parcels is almost surrounded by critical slopes, particularly the area nearest to the existing public street corner. So city staff and city engineer did recommend approval of this with several conditions. The planning commissions considered this at their November 9 regular meeting and recommended approval with conditions as part of their consent agenda. With that, I'll be here to take any questions. Also, I believe Andrew Meniski with Habitat for Humanity is in the meeting and he should be available to answer any questions as well.
All right, councilors, any questions or comments?
I'm just going to say welcome Mr. O'Connell. It's the first time I think you've been before us. So nice to see you.
Thank you.
No other questions?
No questions.
All right. Is there a motion?
We adapt the resolution approving the request to waive the critical slope requirements of City Code Section 34-1120B to allow construction of a duplex at Zero Coleman Court, City Tax Map 49 Parcels 111 and 112.2.
I second the motion.
All right. Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne? I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That carries 40. All right. Next up, we have action item approval of the 2022 council legislative positions. And that includes a report from the TDA PDC proposed legislative positions and also the council specific.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. This is David Blunt, the Deputy Director and Director of Legislative Services for TJPDC. Evening to you, members of council. I'm here this evening to present the regional legislative program for 2022 for your approval. The draft program lists three top legislative priorities, which are support for recovering communities, budgets and funding and broadband. And yes, I will tell you, these are the same priorities that we had for 2021. But there are some language changes to the priorities that I would like to just very briefly point out to you. First amendments to the Support for Recovering Communities priority added some new language that speaks to maximizing the use of federal and state support for the benefit of Virginia residents. When this position was first crafted last year, we did not know about the Consolidated Appropriations Act and the ARPA funding, which were yet to be approved. So we put some emphasis on those programs in the new language. Under the Budgets and Funding Priority Language is included to encourage the inclusion of school bus drivers in the standards of quality funding and for providing funding for mental health positions and services in schools. I've heard a lot about that, both of those from across the region this past several months. And finally, in the broadband position, there's language added to emphasize the cooperative work among internet service providers and to stress and to stress affordability of broadband access in our communities. Beyond the priorities, there is a section of legislative positions that focus on the most critical recommendations and positions in other areas of current interest and concern to localities in our region. Won't go through all of the changes, but just wanted to highlight very briefly a few for you. There is some stronger language concerning internet business regulation to put more emphasis on local authorities. This is really a good supplement, I think, to some language that you all have in your draft legislative positions before you on page six. There's also some added some general support for expanding the allowable use of electronic meetings outside of emergency declarations. There's some amendments that add support for the position that you all have before you in your local priorities as well for the local option, one cent sales tax for school construction and renovations. And finally, I just wanted to point out in the Health and Human Services area, we placed some additional emphasis in the draft on community-based services and added some language addressing census pressures at state hospital, at state hospitals, so that those facilities are better able to take new admissions. Want to keep it brief and just hit some of the highlights. Glad to answer any questions that you may have about the program. And again, I'm looking for you all to adopt the program with a vote this evening.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any questions or comments at this point?
I just have a more question procedurally as we work through I don't be in this capacity, but in my citizen capacity, I still care, how we work through the communications with elected officials and communities around when The communications with elected officials and communities around when some of these priorities are coming up for consideration, how we can best advocate for them specifically, we're. Really focused here on this, you know, sales tax piece or anything we can do in terms of. Putting the right positive pressure on making sure that we have as many resources available to us for our school systems and their capital projects. And so I just kind of curious about what process, Mr. Blunt, that you think will be followed, just to kind of communicate with localities as we progress through this legislative session.
Sure, yeah, that's a great question. And I think certainly with this particular proposal, you've already done some, some advanced legwork. You know, having the legislative position that you all have asked for, included in both the Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia First Cities Legislative Program. So certainly engaging those other organizations as well as the Association of Counties, which is always on already on record and support. And then your Education Association, your School Boards Association, your Superintendent's Association as well. I've been in touch with some of those already and we will certainly be, as we move forward, get closer to the legislative session, be trying to coordinate to. You know, both, you know, our lobbying efforts as well as our reaches to, you know, the constituents that we serve so that they can weigh in with their. Local legislators to support this initiative. So, you know, certainly have been working with your local delegation of Senator Deeds and Delegate Hudson to have the legislation drafted and. Prepared to be introduced for the twenty twenty two session.
Any other questions or comment before Lisa's presentation? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you intend to vote then on both at the end?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Walker and City Councilors, you have in your, your packets. Proposed legislative position statements for City Council. As you know, each year historically. With the assistance of City Council's Legislative Committee, we've prepared a similar statement of position statements. Just to give the general public, but as well as legislators and Mr. Blunt. An idea on where City Council stands on a number of different. Issues and items of either budgetary or legislative significance. And the statement is broken out into broad categories, including education. Land use, affordable housing, the environment is a large section. Transportation issues, criminal justice reform, policing. And. Procurement, a number of other categories. What we've done this year is give you an updated statement that continues positions that you've taken from prior years. But with input from your own legislative committee, we have indicated in your agenda materials in. The blue font, what we believe may be. Your prioritized position statements for the year. And that we might anticipate either budget matters or legislation coming out of the General Assembly. It's likely to be a busy year. It's also likely to be complicated by the results of the elections this year. So if you would like us to change the formatting of, of this. List of position statements, we can either prepare a really short one that consists primarily of the. The matters highlighted in blue ink, or we can keep the longer version, which is what we traditionally do. And we can make the items that are currently highlighted in blue more prominent as. As being your priorities within each one of these categories. But at any rate, it, it does help to have this sort of document to share with legislators because. As things come up, while they may not be exactly the issues that are addressed. This document gives legislators a very good idea of how you would likely feel or the opinions you would have on. Any number of issues that can relate to these matters as they come up. But we are here to help articulate your positions. And so we'll be happy to adjust this draft in any way that you see fit. And. I will turn it over back to you.
All right, thanks, councilors. Councilors, any questions or comments?
I just appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on how this is formatted, because I'll be honest, like, I do think that when we look at this, there's just, there is a lot here. And I think it is important that we somehow differentiate some of the things that we, you know. Are really wanting to prioritize, obviously, but I think it's important still to let the legislators know, like, the more comprehensive list. But on the forefront, I think it's important to kind of identify these top ones. Obviously, I've already talked about it tonight, to me. The number one thing and the one that has the greatest impact on our community in terms of budgeting is just. The ability to have more resources for capital improvements of our schools and so. I wouldn't want to have something like that get muddled in with, you know, all the other things we do care about. I'm not saying we don't care about them, but I think that this is such a comprehensive list that. Just being able to differentiate these top priorities is really important right on the forefront in some kind of summarized way with this almost being like an appendix. So like, these are all the more comprehensive statements that we have, but this is a group of things that. We want to make sure that you absolutely understand are the top priorities for this locality. So, that's where I'm at.
And I want to add to that list, and that works for me, you know, to do that, but. I think that K, as I have for the past few years, eight. Is one of the, probably one of the most pressing issues for who. Can even consider being a council member. And the way that the. The last city elections and how elections have been going over the past few years, if you're talking about to have. A chance to compete in this process if you're not chosen by the Democratic Party. That you have to be able to raise a hundred thousand dollars and then you're trying to figure out how to function on a solid. A stipend as low as the one that councils. Most people are not to be able. To make it work. I have made it work. It has not been easy. I'll talk about that more next meeting. But it needs to be a top priority, or we all always end up with who we've ended up with, like, people will not even be able to contemplate that. And if we're talking about a truly equitable, just welcoming community, the makeup of what this board is going to look like in January should be concerning. For all of us, and this is one of the ways to ensure that people who may not be able to raise that level of funding can consider. Running for council. They'll know that if they make it through, they'll be able to, even if they are lower income. They'll be able to survive the period, and right now, most people won't be able to do that.
Again, a couple of thoughts that I wanted to express about the, the things we highlighted in blue. The change in the General Assembly and in the Governor's Office. Makes it clear that an awful lot of things that we might have thought of as potentially on our wish list a year ago. I have no chance at the moment. None, zero, anything dealing with affordable housing at this point, just as one example. Is not expected to get very far. And there are awful lot of things like that that are likely to be on an ideological hit list for. For the Republican General Assembly and the Republican Governor. The one thing, the, the, the sales tax issue is somewhat of a problem. Because there are an awful lot of Republicans who are just determined to vote against any tax increase. On the other hand, their Delegate Hudson seemed to think that she had enough friends who. On the Republican side of things who might be amenable, that, that might be able to get, to get passed. The, there, I think that she was going to propose two ways of doing it. One was that all localities. Rather than trying to name specific localities, that all localities would be allowed to ask for this one cent sales tax increase. The other way is just to add Charlottesville to the list of about nine jurisdictions that presently have permission to do it. Then the, the second, as I, as I said to Delegate Hudson and to Senator Deeds. That sales tax issue is so far is our number one priority and everything else is about fourteenth in comparison. To its importance. One of the things that we did feel was important, however. Is to encourage the General Assembly to amend the Freedom of Information Act expressly to allow different powers for. The police civilian oversight boards. I understand that there is, and in a, a bill that's going to be proposed. Coming out of Arlington that is specifically intended to deal with this issue. And we alerted both Senator Deeds, Delegate Hudson to the need to, to confer with the representatives from Arlington about that. The other items that I mentioned to, to the. The, the representatives were things that I think probably might have a chance because they are not. Going to be seen as overtly democratic. For example, the proposal for passenger rail projects connecting communities across the Commonwealth, including funding. For improvements to Charlottesville Union Station is one of those things that there are even a fair number of Republicans who are talking about transportation. And talking about trains, that there are a lot of things we might be able to do about commercial building, energy benchmarking and. And things like that that are sort of background kind of climate change issues. That aren't likely to be perceived as, as terribly ideological. So we're looking for some spots like that to, you know, to pick some spots where, where maybe there might be some things that, that we could get through. But that, that was part of our, our thinking in, in highlighting some of the things that we did.
Well, with the amount of money that's going but towards transportation, and I don't know if it's, you know, how much is going towards rail. And then I also have question marks about. What is possible at our station with the. And what upgrades look like based on the owners, lack of participation in the past and whether that's changed. And I understand, you know, with the changing tide that you may want to highlight, you know, different things, but I think if. That's the route we're going, then. Like M one, where you're talking about evictions, the money that we've invested. And legal aid, the requests from the community for more, that those things, no matter what. You know, may happen in the General Assembly that we still have to talk to our representatives about. And to ensure in some way that it's put on the forefront, so. Because those are things that, that can't wait and they'll have an immediate impact.
My concern is simply that I don't, I would not want to have either our delegate or our state senator. Investing political capital in an issue that I don't think has any conceivable chance of getting through either the House or the Senate at this point. When there is in fact a crucial issue, the sales tax issue, where if, if they want to spend some political capital. Please, for goodness sakes, spend it on that issue on our behalf. Don't, don't be spending it on other issues.
But if we're going to present this in this way. Then we are basically saying, like, what's important to us. And the work that our representatives will do, so did Sally or. Look at this list and say, these are things that I think you all should highlight that is possible, or was that determined?
Well, there were things that, that I had picked out as I, things that I thought were going to be seen as non-ideological. Where I thought we could make some progress and where I, I had been led to believe there might be some. Some other participation from other areas in the state so that it wouldn't be something where. Sally Hudson or Creed Deeds is having to carry the ball expressly, but if they were to, to join with somebody else who was already working in that direction. I mean, I, I think it's fair to say that there will be some effort, just as one example, there will be some effort to see if something. Incremental can be done in the climate change area, because everybody recognizes that nothing fundamental. Can be done in the climate change area in the political universe we've got right now, where things are just so polarized on that issue. But people who, who would like, I mean, there are Republicans out there who are, are very conscious of climate change as an issue. Who would like to be able to take some steps in that direction as long as they don't get noticed for doing so. And so if we, if there are some smaller bills like this that they can latch on to. Particularly if there are bills out there that are being plugged by commercial developers, this is one example. Some of those bills might get through, and if so, we, part of what I did was to pick out a couple that I thought might have a chance of somebody. You know, pushing forward and then Sally or Cree can say, yeah, let's, let's jump on that one. But so they, they didn't have any specific suggestions, but they, I, I think that when I suggested some of these. They didn't say, oh, no, forget it, that's never going to get there. They did say that about a lot of the, the housing bills, for example, or the proposals. Or the diversity equity and civil rights things, or the prosperity, health and wellbeing things. Basically, anything that was going to deal with private property rights, anything that was going to be dealing with asking for money from rich people. Has, is thought to have no reasonable chance of success in the current political climate. And like I said, for me, the, the single most important issue is the school sales tax issue. Nothing else comes close. I don't want our folks investing political capital in any other issue. Maybe I'm just chicken.
Way that it has happened in the past is that we give this list and then they invest there. Based on the, the climate that they know exists in Richmond.
Right.
I'm afraid that if we highlight it in this way and we're telling them that that's a focal point, if that isn't something. That has to happen, especially in the way that you are explaining the reasoning for this. Then I don't think that that's what we should do. Because we already have very capable people. One who's very seasoned, been there for a very long time and Delegate Hudson had a very successful year, so she'll know how to prioritize. Her time. And what she thinks is possible to get there, but if we are highlighting in that way. Then I'm concerned about these other things that there may be. That they may have time to fight for that. Does not rise to the occasion, which I don't think will happen with. Especially Delegate Hudson. I mean, I think she takes a lot of time and. What this works, so I think she will read the entire thing and fight for what she can, you know, what she reasonably thinks. Has a potential to pass, but I don't think we should be excluding.
My suggestion was that we don't exclude, that we include all of it, but that we do identify the things that we, I mean, I'm with Lloyd in terms of like the school. Tax, like literally, if we could put every energy into that, because some people are more pessimistic, I'm still optimistic, there might be a chance that this can happen for us this year. And that is like, this is just heads and tails above everything else in terms of the impact it would have on this community and all the other things we want to invest. Financial resources in, if we can get that to unlock those dollars. And so I see a benefit of prioritizing, but never to take away from like this more comprehensive list. Because I agree, we have to put that in the hands, you know, of our legislators to handle, but I, I'm sensing that there was a conversation to that, to that end and that. Like, this would be helpful for them in terms of prioritizing, because otherwise, it's, it's a lot of stuff in here.
Yeah, but even the first presentation, I mean, this is similar to the report that we've received in the past and. You know, again, from someone, Mr. Blunt has done this for years. I don't, I think what Lloyd described is very different than saying. We want you to look at all of this. I think you're talking about managing people, energy and expectations. I think if anything that you all should have seen over the past few years. Is that if you're persistent enough and bring things up, that is actually how it gets changed. Putting things on the back burner is why you are having discussions, you know. Fifteen, fifty years later about a topic, so. I heard both of you, but I think you all haven't said the same thing. I heard both of you, but I think you all haven't said the same thing.
I, but I think we have to be thoughtful about what we put on the front burner. Because as much as it, it's upsetting to me that we're in a different political environment, we just are. Like, I wish that we were in a position where we had a majority of people in Richmond who are aligned with our values, but we don't, we don't. And so I think that we need to be thoughtful about how we leverage that political capital. And I don't like the politics of any of this. It infuriates me. But this is where we are and it's the reality. And as a result, I think we really need to be prescriptive about what we prioritize, but.
And I understand that, but we talked about in the past too, and I was afraid, and I've said this during the school reconfiguration meetings. That is just one thing that we need to do differently in this community. And we can't put everything on a back burner with it because again, as I said earlier, you have these fancy almost hundred million dollar school buildings and the kids who come to them, especially the kids when we center the conversation around equity, they won't be ready to learn when they walk in the door because of everything else that's going on in their lives. So we can't shift everything just to get schools done. And I have been very supportive of schools and have gotten a lot there, held the conversation on track and gotten a lot accomplished, even though that's not what the papers say it. And I continue to be, but if we start switching this conversation about funding and advocacy needs where the only thing that we're focused on is getting that done, we're going to have a lot of problems that we've neglected in the community by the time that occurs. And I just want to make sure we don't do that.
I think that all of council from the conversations I had agrees that like from a school's perspective, it's way more than just the facilities. At the same time, I think we're just trying to figure out like, how do we best leverage, you know, the resources and the voices that we have to accomplish the things that we think are, are, are possible in the next few months. And I just think there is a prioritization that needs to take place. In the reality, unfortunate reality that where we're at.
The reality is that we could eliminate and just say, okay, we're not going to express any priorities. Y'all go do what you want to do. And because of our communication with them, they already know the single, the two most important issues. One is the tax and the other is the FOIA. And the other sixty-eight on this list are going to be essentially indistinguishable to them. If that's, if that's what you want, fine. I mean, I, that, that's not a hill I'm going to die on tonight.
Just one thing I would add, it's already highlighted in blue, but I think is maybe not quite as important as the sales tax, but very important is the both for our, I've seen for the community is the grocery tax. I think that is the incoming governor is one of the signature things they talked about. It seems like it has democratic support. And if that is not revenue neutral for localities will lose a meaningful, I think twenty percent of the grocery tax goes to schools, so.
Are there any other comments? Questions?
All right. Is there a motion for the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission proposed legislative position?
I move that we adopt the TJ PDC twenty twenty-two legislative program.
Second.
Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne? Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That carries for all. All right. Next up, we have the city council proposed legislative positions. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the city twenty twenty-two legislative program.
Second.
My quick question is, so at this point, there is agreement just to highlight what has been highlighted here. And that's a memo attached to the front and everything else included, or is it included as it is and just highlighted in color?
I think that's something at the front to kind of summarize the top priorities, followed by everything would be my preference, but.
That'd be fine.
Some sort of one page, we could call it an executive summary and just list the things that are highlighted in blue, but also leave them. We can un-highlight them in the, the main portion of the document then and leave them in, in the overall statement as well.
That's fine with me too.
And I think that leaving them highlighted in the text may ensure that someone goes through the entire text. But so that's my position, that one.
We, we can do that as well. That would be fun.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right. That carries for zero. Thank you. Staff and David for presentations this evening. All right. And can we take a five minute?
All right. Call this meeting back to order. And next up, we have the approving of the disposition of statues, the Robert E. Lee, Thomas, Jay Stonewall Jackson and the Sacagawea Lewis and Clark, their first view of the Pacific. And if we can have staff discussion and then counselors, I think it's best if we probably discuss them one at a time, but if you want to discuss the Lee and Jackson together, then we can do that too.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, members of council and members of the community. Just to give a brief overview as to how we've gotten here, I very much appreciate that we had members of our community who shared some of the reasoning behind city councils' efforts to remove the Lewis and Clark and Sacagawea statue. So I'm going to focus on just catching everyone up to speed about the Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson statues. So in March of twenty sixteen, city council received a petition to remove the Confederate general Robert E. Lee from its location in Market Street Park. And following that petition, council established the Blue Ribbon Commission on Race Memorials in Public Spaces. That commission sent their final report in to council in December of twenty sixteen, which indicated that the removal and relocation or contextualization in place were options recommended by them for the Lee and Jackson statues. By February of twenty seventeen, council had created a resolution to announce its intention to remove or contextualize the statute of Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson with a priority on the removal of Lee. However, in March of twenty seventeen, a lawsuit was initiated that paused their progress. In September of twenty seventeen, council then resolved to remove Jackson from Court Square Park again pending that lawsuit. Move forward to July of twenty twenty, that's when the General Assembly removed prohibitive language for Virginia Code Statute fifteen point two dash eighteen twelve that provided permission for localities to make decisions about whether or not to remove, relocate, contextualize or cover monuments or memorials. And then finally, in April of twenty twenty-one, the Virginia Supreme Court decided that the March twenty seventeen lawsuit was going in favor of the C. So then the organization moved forward with the removal of the statues after a review of their intent by the Board of Architectural Review in May of this year. We were able to finally remove the Lee and Jackson statues on July tenth of twenty twenty-one. And through a meeting of council, we were also able to remove the bronze sculpture depicting Lewis, Clark and Sacagawea. Further later on that week in July, the stone pedestals for both Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson were removed. But the stone pedestal remains for Lewis and Clark and Sacagawea in place. Once all of those things occurred, there was another part of section fifteen point two dash eighteen twelve where the city had to engage in a thirty day offering period where the council offered the statues for relocation and placement to any museum, historical society, government or military battlefield. Upon the conclusion of those periods for all three statues, city council had the sole authority to make a decision regarding the removal, relocation and contextualization of those statues on its own timetable without any additional public hearings or processes. As council did not choose to award any of the statues to the organizations during that offering period, the city proceeded with solicitation of offers to gather documents for first Lewis and Clark, and that solicitation ended in August of twenty twenty. And then for both Confederate statues and that solicitation ended in October twenty twenty-one. Seven proposals for Lewis, Clark and Sacagawea were received by the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one deadline. And six proposals were received by the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one deadline for either Lee, Jackson or both statues. All the proposals received by the stated deadlines were posted for public review on the city's FOIA download page beginning October twenty twenty-one and remain there for review for anyone who would like to see it. At this time, Mayor Walker, I'll turn it back to you, but staff is ready to provide any support needed during your discussions.
All right. Thank you. So council, would you all like to discuss the two together or separately?
Separately probably makes more sense.
Okay. So first up, we have the Lee statue.
I think it's important for the public, in case people hadn't followed along because it was something that was kind of confusing to folks is that not all proposals, as Ms. Marshall just outlined, were in response to both statues. There are some, there is, you know, one that we've gotten the greatest amount of feedback on is actually only specific to one statue, not both statues. So I just want to make sure that people are, are clear on that because we've gotten mixed feedback from the public that reflected otherwise.
I, I'm a little confused, I guess, in my own mind about how I, I, I want the discussion to progress in part because I think that there, I think that there is a relationship between how we handle these different statues. I'll just Ms. Marshall did not go into what the different proposals have been, but I think that the most of the discussion has turned on, first of all, for Sacagawea, do we give the statue to the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center in Darden Towne Park? Or do we sell it to Trammell Crow and his real estate company down in, in Texas for putting in a statuary park that is part of his office or their, their office park? Interestingly, the statuary park includes a number of sculptures by Rodin and some very famous sculptors. And it really is an accumulation of fairly significant works of art, not, not merely political schlock or the kind of stuff that frankly, we're more accustomed to seeing in things like the Johnny Reb statue. And more importantly, they're willing to give us $325,000 as well as carrying the statue away. The, the $325,000 that I think is related to the Jackson and the Lee statues because when we allocated or prior council allocated a million dollars for removal and then recontextualization of this, of the, of the parks or renovation of the parks. I think most people thought the million dollars was going to be more than enough to take care of the statues and there'd be money left over for the parks. Well, it turns out we spent $980,000 on the contract to remove the statues and another $20,000 went to police overtime and all kinds of things. And so no, there's no money left over. So the question is, do we have any way to do anything financially with these, with these parks? And when people start talking to us, as Mr. Allen did earlier about having grand plans for the historical interpretation or reinterpretation of Court Square and slave, you know, the, the slave block and so on. There was a, you know, there are all these proposals all involve at some level, they involve some money that at the moment Charlottesville does not have and probably won't have any capital funds to spend on things like parks and monuments for probably five to 10 years down the road because of the schools. And maybe even longer than that if we don't end up getting the, the sales tax increase. So my thought on it has been to, you know, if we can sell the Sacagawea statue for $325,000, we now have a $325,000 nest egg with which we could go ahead and do something else in in the Market Street Park and/or the Court Square Park. And that's a nest egg. We don't have any other way to get for the foreseeable future. There are a number of, of specific things about the Sacagawea statue. For example, you know, we, the city, I don't think has ever contributed a dime to the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center. It's actually located in Almarle County. And the question is, when we have a chance to get $325,000 in cash for this statue, but here we're giving the statue to Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center. We're effectively giving them a $325,000 gift or we're effectively giving them a gift that costs us $325,000. Would we give them $325,000 in cash? I think the answer is clearly no. If we did give them $325,000, would it be with the intent that they go buy a statue with it? I think the intent would be no. It doesn't make any sense at all to, as far as I'm concerned, that we forego $325,000 to be able to give the statue to somebody that we wouldn't give $325,000 in cash to. So I, I look on the two issues as being fundamentally related because I don't see any way that we can accomplish the kinds of things in Court Square, at least that, that the city can help with the things in Court Square any other way. I don't know any other way we're going to get any money to be able to put into those kinds of efforts. And for that reason, I mean, number one, I think the issues are, are related. I don't think we can talk about them separately. Number two, I think that the, the, my preferred answer would be to, to sell the Sac, the Lewis and Clark and Sacagawea statue for $325,000, put that $325,000 sort of earmarked towards the, the park and historical interpretation kinds of things. I would also be in favor of the, of giving the Lee statue to the Jefferson School. That actually is a, an entity, a charity that we have financially supported. It is in the city. It's, that's, those are both different circumstances. But the, the question in my mind is whether the, the lax art people, the Los Angeles Museum of Art that has offered $100,000 for the two statues for Lee and Jackson, whether they would offer us anything for just the Jackson statue. If they would, then that would be the, the, the perfect combination of things. And again, would add to a nest egg that could go into, in, into this kind of historic preservation or historic reinterpretation effort. So that's, that's my overall spiel. I have some specific things to talk about along the way and questions to ask along the way. But that's, that's where I'm coming from on the whole thing.
All right. So I think maybe we should talk about the Sacagawea Lewis and Clark and those offers first then.
Okay.
You spent the significant amount of time there and I, so just to, to your comments on other counselors, do you want to go? Okay, so you have to be very careful about, Michael, are you gonna?
You can go ahead.
Okay, so in terms of, you know, one of the things that, so the park is owned by both the city and county, right Lisa?
Right.
Is that, okay. And I have said to almost everybody I've talked to the, you know, tire time, I, I don't like anything about that statue and seeing it in the park, I think is problematic too. But selling it to this individual in Texas is, I think, more problematic than anything. I would like for us to have a discussion around how to ensure that the exploratory center that they center the recontextualization in the way that we are doing all of this work for in the first place. There is a dollar amount attached, but there's a saying, all money ain't good money. And I think this is one of those times where you just have to leave that out as a factor that you're pursuing because we are making moral argument here about and that's what we've been trying to do with all of the statues. So I don't think bringing the dollar amount into any of those equations or even the fear surrounding what could happen if someone doesn't like, you know, our votes. Because what we've been saying as a community is how do we move forward here? And so I guess the first thing is just to decide whether there's other support for the, and I know Vice Mayor McGill is not here, but if there's support for the Texas, since that's the only one that was brought up, offer. And if not, then I would like for us to discuss ways to probably strengthen the city's interests and if we decide to place it here.
I'll say that as much as I consider myself a little more fiscally moderate, this is a case where I also agree that I have to separate that from my thinking. I've been on this road for the last four years. I was at those discussions, the fact that tonight we heard such a resounding alliance of, of representatives who frankly haven't agreed on many things. And the times that we've engaged with them really aligning around this idea was really powerful. I kind of, my gut was telling me that going into any of this, but just to hear those voices and to see, just to hear them be so consistent and supportive. I'm in agreement that I'd rather focus our energies around how do we ensure that the long-term vision that we have in that location can be met?
And likewise, you know, I wouldn't support the, the Texas offer. You know, I know there's, you know, potentially money that could go towards redesign of parks or Court Square, but in my mind, you know, any of those redesigns are with the goal of telling a different story with public art and public spaces about the narrative of, you know, the history of our city. And I don't, I, I, I don't, I think that is inseparable from the final disposition of all three of these statues. And I know it's not quantifiable, but I don't, I don't see how we can actually separate those things. And so for that reason, I think it's just very important to think about, you know, the final disposition of all three of these statues being a part of that bigger effort. And so for, yeah, would, would, would not be interested in the Texas offer and likewise with the, yeah, I guess we'll get there, but just put it out there with the Lee statue, you know, the, the only offer, you know, I'd really seriously entertain is the Jefferson School one. And then the LAX offer for the Jackson statue, should they be interested in just one of them rather than both?
That is one outstanding question that the multiple counselors have, just that would be a follow-up that's necessary just to confirm if that entity would be receptive to just the Jackson statue. And if so, is there still a monetary amount that they would value for that? Because right now their proposal includes both statues.
Yeah, and I think that it should be since it's offered, we just need, we know it will be a reduced amount. And so what is that amount? And if, and maybe if that is one that we can move to the so we can vote tonight or we're not planning on voting tonight?
I just wanted to ensure with some of the questions, I know that you had some questions, Mayor Walker, about just assurances that we could have contractually to make sure that the longer term
Yeah.
placement of the Sacagawea statue could meet our needs. I know that we have these questions around whether the lax art entity would be willing to take one statue. So I think some of those were loose and so I wasn't sure if we're in a position yet unless we're in a position just to vote on what our intentions are. At the same time, I'm really sensitive to the fact that Councilor McGill is here unexpectedly and this is a, you know, big decision.
Okay, so back to the the exploratory center and the, and that statue, I think that and I really appreciate that, again, the community and the widespread support. The comment centered around that were made by the descendants, Sacagawea's descendants about what was offered in earlier 2000s versus what was offered now. And I would like for us to kind of look through that lens when we're talking about like a permanent home for the statues. And so what I had talked about earlier was just if the city could lease the statue or maintain. And that's like the example I gave with the dollar lease that we, I think the discovery, and I know we're not talking about real estate, but not, not amount that's of any significant, but just wanting to make sure that long-term, because there is value. There is value to these, which is not the most important thing for me at all, but ensuring that the offer that we received earlier and that we just discussed, that if in the future the, which the city has no seat on the governing board at the Lewis and Clark Center and even the foundational interest of that center. And I know that we are here today prioritizing an indigenous woman, but that hasn't always been the case. The makeup of the board, even some of the comments that have been made around even some people who have strongly advocated, who just want to make sure I feel that Lewis and Clark's interest, that their belief, how they should continue to be highlighted is maintained. I just want to ensure that the reason we're doing this that the intent from the ED to prioritize, there was something I read that says, listen to native peoples. And I think you have to do more than listen. I think you have to learn from them and that they are not advising on a project like this, that they are actually leading. And if there's any change in the future, if we move, as we just talked about with our state government, some questionable things that happen here sometimes, people can change governments who's elected can change and there may be a different interest. And Charlottesville, even if it's sometimes just really a surface level, that more liberal and progressive stance is even more than is on display at the county. And I just would want to make sure that it was possible for us to be able to dictate whether it was, as I said to someone earlier today, 50 years from now, five years from now, 15, but even if it was 50, to make sure that we're not setting up future councils to have just given something away and it ends up in a place that we prefer it not to. So if there's something that we can do contractually to ensure that that ownership is maintained, but that the center does have an op, the opportunity to live up to the standards that the community is setting, then I want to, you know, I would fully support that.
I like what Paul Goodlow McIntyre tried 100 years ago, right?
Okay.
I just, I frankly think that that's not a very, I, I, I really find it intriguing that the statue was so offensive that we needed to move it from a public spot that's in the city. And that in, instead of moving it 1500 miles away, we're going to move it onto city-owned land, though it's in the county and still have it on display. And that we want to retain control over it. I don't understand why we wouldn't want to simply get rid of it and let it go and be done with it. I, I don't know.
And so for me, a couple of points that you made there, I think that in the future, again, I just said if the will changes, which it could very much change for us, but again, looking at, and those are some questions we can ask the current makeup, I think the city of that board, that the city would want to have more say. Also, people think that they understand what it means to kind of relinquish control until it's time to do it. So again, this is something where I think the people who would not be able to say that they are owners of this, that the city is still holding a vested interest for those individuals. The difference between moving it, I don't like the park either, so I've already made that very clear. But I think that's the option that we are working with. I don't like that it's outside and I don't like that you have to be subjected to it without that recontextualization process that they are going to go through. And so if you just walk up to it without someone there telling a story, maybe something changes in the future, but right now I have the same reaction as I had then, but putting it into somebody's private garden, if you understand the reason that a lot of people have been telling you the symbolism of things and the power that white people constructed monuments and told false narratives about themselves because they were attempting to increase their power. And when you see yourself on display, it does that. And that's what we've been saying about these things, the entire time we've been having this discussion. And so for someone to be willing to pay 325,000 to add it to a garden, and I don't know if Wikipedia is right, but with these other statues and even the documents that this individual has in their private collection, that Has in their private collection, that screams for me the foundations of white supremacy. Now, I haven't talked to him, I don't know him, but I think we have to look at it through that lens. And so you're able to, let's say, have a tea party and have people walk through your little garden where you have acquired. All of these. Or acquired the statue to add to your collection where you can continue to talk about dominating. Someone who's already have enough money to make anything that they want probably shake. Happen in this world, I wouldn't, I would hope that we would understand why we wouldn't add to that. If you do not understand the meaning. Of the symbolism behind why these things happened in the first place, then it would be hard to understand with someone. With that much resources and that much power and already the privilege of being white and being able to hide it behind the illusion. Of being supreme as a result of that, then you would understand.
I, I turned off my camera because my internet connection is unstable, not because I was, I, I lost about thirty seconds of what you had to say there. You know, I don't. I, I look at it, I guess, as the, the Crow Operation in Texas. Okay, ma- maybe, you know, he's, he's, he's got statuary of artistic merit, like Rodan, he's got historic stuff. From Winston Churchill to Che Guevara. I, I don't judge him and I don't judge them. It seems as though he's likely to be. Putting the, you know, taking care of the assets as objects of art. And whether they have cocktail parties there frankly doesn't concern me. I think that. Again, I've, I've said, I've said my piece, I think we would do well to have, to have the money to enable us to do all of the other things that we would want to do. But that's, apparently I don't have any support for that. That's all, I'm gonna leave that one alone.
So I guess at this point. In terms of support for the exploratory center, is there support around strengthening the cities? And I mean, the city maintaining ownership, but. Leasing it in some way, or if we don't have to lease it, I mean, that leaving that to Lisa or Lisa to figure out?
I'm less prone to want to have us continue to have ownership of it, but I would like to have pretty strong language and understanding what. The vision is and having accountability for that vision longer term.
Michael, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I guess. To me, though, the ultimate goal is ensuring. That is properly contextualized and has. Terms of how that contextualization looks from. Descendants, so for that reason, you know, I feel like. As presented, you know, I feel like in the short term, I feel like there's assurances that will happen, but I'm certainly, I don't know. What it looks like and, but I'm open to, you know, trying to ensure that that stays the case long-term, thinking, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years ahead. But I don't know what that looks like or entails and sort of am agnostic on, on that point, but the bottom line is just ensuring that long-term that it has. Contextualization.
So he says there are recommendation on Miss Robertson, a recommendation that you have that we could consider?
Not really a recommendation. I, I think one sort of hanging issue that, that you haven't really talked about. Is that the, the base of the Sacagawea statue, the pedestal is still. In its original location and. You know, I don't know how I deal with that. I don't, I don't know if they want that as well. That's probably about a. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar move in and of itself. Based on. You know, just. What the cost of the other items was. So I don't really have a recommendation. We will. We will work with you to do what you'd like to do. We do need to have some basic direction about. You know, do you want to transfer ownership under a contract with some conditions? Do you want to have a lease arrangement? We need a little bit of direction about. What exactly you're trying to accomplish so that, that if we. Begin some sort of negotiation with the Exploratory Center, we know what you're looking for.
And I guess my preference is conveyance with assurances that we negotiate.
And I don't know how, we have talked about that before. In ensuring long-term, the assurances that we vote on, so I would want. To be able to know that long-term, no matter what is happening and. You know, the political landscape that. Like if anything differently were to happen to the statue from what they thought should happen on site, or if they wanted to. You know, if the statue weren't going to be, wasn't going to no longer be a part of the display that we would have some say in that.
I don't want to be too prescriptive, because I think that the engagement process has been outlined and the involvement of, I think, the right stakeholders. I, I don't, I want to give it the flexibility to, to be creative without us hampering that. So I, it's, I think it's a tricky balance.
I don't think we would be hampering anything. I mean, based on the discussion that we had earlier, this is very different from saying, okay. There's a county supervisor on the board, so if there's a city representative on the board. Also, all of these individuals that are chiming in, but are they current board members or is it a mandate on? As part of their bylaws that they will, they could be future board members and putting together. Like advisory groups in some way is very different from someone who can ensure if the political climate changed, where they could just dismantle those. Advisory groups that there is, that the original intent is, has to be considered. And I'm not going to spend, you know, too much time on this either, but I want to make sure that. What I vote on, that someone is not looking, you know, at this fifty years from now and saying, why didn't they put something in. Place where we can only send, hey, exploratory center, this is our belief of what the council in twenty twenty-one intended. Please take note of that as you consider your next steps. We run into a lot of things. Like that over during our time on council, and so if it, what does it hurt? If their intention is to do this thing and we are still able to enforce that in some way.
So would you like us to reach out to the Exploratory Center and see if, if they're. If they have an attorney that they work with, would you like us to reach out and. Discuss this further with them? I expect at least some of them are listening tonight, but, and then you could take this up again on December twentieth.
Or is this, so you, would you? I don't want to hold these things up, because again, we only have one more meeting that I'll be, and have it will be a part of. So if we can move things forward tonight, that would be a preference.
So without really knowing sort of a lot of details, your, your options would, would be. If you, if you don't want to transfer it outright, your option really would be some sort of a lease. I, I wouldn't really know how to write a contract with conditions, because I, I don't. Have in front of me. A set of conditions. And I haven't really had a chance to think about how you would enforce the conditions that, that you're looking to create.
Okay, so you could have that to us for, and we, would we need two votes on that on the twentieth, or could it be one vote?
Well, I, I suppose it depends on what it is. I, I expect it could be one vote, but. Have to. Figure out what, what it is, what the format of it is.
But it is simpler if we just convey it with conditions.
The question in that situation is, is how do you? If, if you're looking for control over a long period of time, how do you enforce the conditions after you've conveyed your ownership? It's, if it, if it, if it was a car, after you transfer title to the car. How do you control whether somebody paints it or changes the tires or, or, you know, once you give up your title. You give up your control.
I have people even responding to any of these proposals, like to these requests or proposal. They're laying out. Like in this case, they're, they're really thorough about how they would take, go about this approach to contextualizing who they would engage. Isn't there anything kind of binding about that, or we're just, is it really a take your word for it, for any of these cases?
It's, it's really a take your word for it. You, you are asking people to make their best pitch to you, but you really. You know, there are very few ways to keep control of something.
Okay, so is there consensus for us to hopefully vote on it on twentieth and for this to be explored? Between staff, council and the Exploratory Center, but knowing that of all the proposals that we receive. The Exploratory Center is the one that we are considering. Lloyd, any comment?
Uh, well, I'm, I know I'm in the minority.
All right.
I, I'll just say, I, I, although I am in the minority, if we're going to go ahead with things with Lewis and Clark Center. I really don't think we want to be in the business of trying to put strings on everything. Ultimately, the control we would have. Would be to say, you're not doing what you're supposed to do. We're taking the statue back. We don't want the statue back.
Well, I don't think that's.
So I, I, I just think that the effort to try to have all these, these strings on it is not going to work well.
Yeah, well, I think in the future, if the center, like if they decided to sell it, then based on this, the city would have. A say in who it sold to. If they don't sell it, we would not intervene in any way. If there's an advisory group and they come to us and say with the original intent for you leasing the statue. To the Exploratory Center was, they are not fulfilling, then if we convey it without any stipulations, then we don't have any say. If they don't do those things.
Is it your thought that, I'm, I'm sorry?
If they do those things, we would not interject in any way.
Is it your thought that we would interfere if we didn't like the way they were contextualizing the statue?
No, because I think the only thing that we, when that would be brought to our attention is based on if they are. Who have heard from the individuals, including Sacagawea's descendants. They have been very clear about what was offered in the past. They are very vocal now. They understand what this council. And the form, previous council was offering that the previous, the council that they came in early two thou- or mid-two thousands. Could not offer them. So I think in a case like that, if we hear back from them, then that would be. If we don't hear from them, that means that everything is going as planned based on. I mean, this is a time where we would look back and say, we could have take, you know, taken their word for it. But no, I don't think this is a situation where we have to intervene, because if they're doing what they're supposed to do. Or what they said they would do, then that is, we're not going to hear the complaints from the public. I think this just ensures that the public. For me, that those individuals know that they are still a way to kind of make sure that what was promised is happening.
I, I guess the, but the question is, if, if five years from now. They do something with their recontextualization that we don't like, or that the, the folks from. The Shoshone tribe don't like, and the Shoshone tribe comes to us. They use your power over them to make them change the way they have contextualized the statue. Is that what you're proposing we would be agreeing to do?
Yes, I think that at that point that we should be able to chime in there.
I think that's very dangerous territory.
But it's similar to the conversations we are having around housing, even though this is a very different topic. People have said they would do a thing and then they did not do that thing, and there was no, we have to strengthen our rules and regulations to make sure that happens. If you have, if they, if the proposals that we've seen. State one thing, and then in your example, five years later, they change course, we weren't doing this for a temporary fix. And that is, that's what's giving me some pause here. But. If we, I guess, staff has to go back and do a thing for this particular statue. Maybe or not, but if there is not support for three, that is just what I would feel comfortable. With this transaction happening. But again, we, it's late and we have, you know, two more statues and. So if there's not will for this to be in place, then we can, you know, move forward.
Well, I, I think that the, from the First Amendment perspective. I think there would be real problems with us trying to impose some sanctions on somebody for. For not having spoken the way we want them to speak. That's a difference between that and saying, we anticipate you're going to do these things. We like them, fine, here you are. Or we don't like what you're proposing, fine. But for, for us to be in essence, taking action against a punitive action of some sort. Against somebody, some entity for the content of their speech really troubles me.
So we're talking about the how, what has been highlighted from the statue. The way that Sacagawea has been depicted in the statue, the subservient position when she was. More likely than not, based on everything we know, leading those to. Those individuals, right? And so that is what we have talked about here. Where there are two individuals who are not highlighted with the prominence that these two men are white men are highlighted in. That is, and what is the accurate, what is the accurate history? You cannot deny that. And so part of why you've heard some feedback against the Texas proposal. Is based on what would this individual do with this thing? And if the Exploratory Center had a, submitted a different proposal, then this proposal that talks about. Including. The descendants in a way that they haven't been included in the past. And making sure that they understand that they will be leaders in this project. And as I said earlier, not just listened to, but that we are learning from them. I think that's just a very different. And if they had presented something similar to, in five years, we'll do whatever. And again, this is us talking, they haven't said that. But I think at times you want to ensure. That those things do not happen. That's just, that's my position. Okay, so. Where are we landing with this?
Prepare to vote next meeting and then the interim. Reaching out um.
To the center to see.
What options exist to try to um? Just lock in assurances that long term. You know, being contextualized in in the way that our intent is. That was my understanding.
And I thought I heard earlier that you also want. Um, approval. Should they decide to sell the statue later or otherwise transfer it to somebody else?
Yes, that's one of the things that I am asking for.
Well, if we're retaining ownership, we could veto any transfer anyway.
I think we discussed the option of not retaining ownership, but just providing assurances with conveyance.
Well, we talked about. So you think that we can do that, at least Ms. Robertson and oh. Because before it was once you conveyed on ownership.
It's it's more difficult. Um. But it's more difficult, but if if. You're doing it. As a gift, there are ways to place conditions on a gift. Um, or donation and just have to look at. How to write that down the road if if those conditions weren't satisfied. You'd have to um. You'd have to. Bring some sort of a lawsuit to um enforce the conditions.
And that's not likely to happen. Right? So I just for my support on this and I support it, but I'm probably not gonna vote for it. If there is not a way to ensure whether it's fifteen years or fifty years that um. What we say is our. Um, mission and values and the vision for it if we can't ensure that that maintains long term.
I I think that a future council. Can counter that. Regardless, like I'm not saying they're going to, but I just I don't know that we have the power to. Do that in that length of distance regardless, like if if there's a future, so say we maintain it and we have some ownership of it, but a future council has a very different vision. I'm just hypothesizing. I just, I think.
We have done things like that since our term, so then we know that we can undo an action if there's an agreement.
Right.
You are setting the intent. By our vote tonight or on the twentieth. Um, so if a future council undoes that, um, if they if that is undone, and they will have to explain that to the community. And again, it could be the same community that could say the recontextualization is no longer important to them. So I understand that, but it just um. I just think it's important. Okay. Are we? Ready to move on? So I think for the um Stonewall Jackson statue, then we're gonna have staff check. With the LAX arts to see what dollar amount they whether it's like fifty thousand for per statue or if they're offering a different amount and then. We should be able to vote on that on the twentieth. Get that information and potentially vote on that on the twenty.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so next up, it's the um. Lee statue. And so as they are uh, the Jefferson School. Pro- um. Proposal, was there another proposal that we're talking about right now?
Other proposals, just understanding that the. LAX arts can can be separated because they obviously included the Lee statue in their proposal.
I think and if it's not separated, are we saying that we would send both of them or that we would just tell them that their only option is one?
Maybe we don't wanna say right now and we wanna find out what their situation is and we don't wanna give away our negotiating position quite yet.
That's not where I am, but.
And it seems to me somebody I asked I wanna ask a question first before we go deciding we're closing doors.
Why would I of okay.
Um. Regardless, for me, the the only option I would consider for the Lee statue is the Jefferson School. So to me. The question about LAX is purely whether they want the one.
Heather, are you, do you have comments here?
I certainly have a preference, I think, is the majority. I just. It's helpful to know, like, we're in a situation where we can be able to. To disposition all three statues and um. I I mean, are we in a position where we just wanna go ahead and vote on one tonight? Or are we fine with just taking the vote on all three? When we have all the information that we want and five of us are here. I mean, that's where I think I'm just at. It's like, what's that's the preference and. I'm fine with us taking a vote on all three. I mean, I think we're sensing where council is and. Um, just have all the information and all five of us here. I I I prefer to kind of table this and do it all at once on the twentieth.
One issue that somebody raised in an email that we received today. Said that the formulation of bronze a hundred years ago contained more lead. Than the formulation of bronze usable now. And the email suggested that somebody who knows something about it far more than I do certainly. Suggested that there may actually be a problem with trying to repurpose that old bronze under present. With with present methods. Uh, so I I don't even know whether. Uh, the bronze that is being used at that point uh, whether it was being used in the Lee statue. Would turn out to be worthy of being used in in some new repurposed effort. Just another another wrinkle.
I do feel like the Jefferson proposal, I can pull it up again, but um. Did reference engagement with with people with groups with specialties, both on the the base side of it and how that could be redone as well as the actual bronze.
I mean, unless we are unlike unless we are likely to consider the um. Other option, I don't know why we couldn't vote on this one tonight.
I had asked a question that I don't know if anybody has an answer for one. Uh, I know Ms. Marshall said that the Lee statue didn't seem to be as heavy as the Jackson statue, but I don't know what that means. Are we talking about? A difference in tons or I mean. How how much of a gift are would we be making to the Jefferson School here? What does bronze cost? Do we know?
I do not know the price of bronze right now, and I think you actually just brought up a really wonderful point of even being able to give you that number. Is I do not know the percentage of bronze to any other metal that may be within the Lee statue. When we talk about it being light, uh, the individuals who moved our statue, Team Henry, have quite a bit of expertise at this point in moving Confederate statues. And what they noted was that the statue weighed less than their expectations. Uh, it's not a given, but usually when that occurs. Um, it was not necessarily made as purely an art piece. It could have been made more politically, whereas Stonewall Jackson was right on the money for what they thought. Um, which usually indicates that it was created. More on the art side than on the other side. Again, nothing is constant, but just I I do trust their expertise because they've done a couple of these at this point. Um, and that is something that they noted, but we have not had either statue tested for the percentage. Of metals that are within it at this particular point. Um, and just to give an aside. It is something that would be an actually interesting question in part because what we did find out, especially with uh Lee. Inside his pedestal was just rubble. It was just crap to hold it together in the nicest way I can say it. If you see pictures of it, it's just concrete and pebbles and it's pretty gross. Uh, and you wouldn't have necessarily thought that from the end, what would be on the inside of it. So. I'm actually really unsure as to the percentage of the metal within it and its its usability. And that is certainly unfortunately something I don't think I can get you all quickly. Um, I don't even know where to start for that one.
Well, certainly the assay of the of the bronze and determining, you know, how much of its copper and tin and lead and so on. Is is beyond the scope of anything that I would expect we would do right away, but. Um. Uh, I I'd just be curious to know since since we're apparently contemplating a gift. What the value of the gift is. I guess we don't know. And and maybe can't know.
All right, so um, at this point, we voting or we are moving it to the twentieth?
By another way, I mean, the only question to me is uh, it would be just one vote, right? So it would either way, it's still done by the end of the year.
Understanding, certainly, I think we're all committed to that happening.
Are there questions or comments? All right. Um, next up, we have a preliminary discussion on uh collective bargaining.
All right, um. I think that. Um. I note that this Thomas assigned this to me to introduce um. As city council is aware, um, the amalgamated transit union emailed. Um, the city council proposal for a collective bargaining ordinance. On November first, I believe it was twenty twenty one, and then today. A representative of um the ATU emailed a revised proposed collective bargaining ordinance for your consideration. Um, we haven't had a chance to um digest the revised ordinance that was received today, but. Um. Um, the person that that sent it to us did include a summary of what they said the changes. Um, will be. Um. Based on state law, city council has a hundred and twenty days from uh November first to decide whether or not to enact the ordinance that. Um, the amalgamated transit union um delivered to you back in November. So that would put you at. March first, twenty twenty one. Previously, on August sixteenth, uh, you adopted a resolution that generally supported the development of a collective bargaining program for the city. And a a collective bargaining ordinance. But um, recognizing that that you're in need of additional information and analysis to make some informed decisions, things like. How many bargaining units do you have? What um, what approach or 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 um model of collective bargaining do you want to use? Um, how do you talk about setting this up and and beginning um to negotiate with people? And how do you build money for that into the upcoming budget process? All of these things are questions that. Um. Talked about in the past, the the idea um that most likely uh a consultant is gonna be necessary to. Um. Um, assist with pulling together some additional information and analysis. So um. In August, uh, you tasked the city manager with pulling together some information and analysis. Um, and you gave authority to conduct a procurement if. In order to do that. Um, a consultant was necessary. And originally, you uh were hoping for um. A timeline and a list of deliberables and decision points. Um, you were hoping that that could be could have been presented at your second meeting in September. Um, that didn't happen and I'm sorry to report that. Um, progress hasn't been made on this matter since you passed the resolution in August. Um, as you're well aware, in the intervening time. Um, the city hasn't been able to hire um a human resources director and that person is a key city official who would not only. Um, most likely want to have. Uh, input into putting um an ordinance and a program together. Um, but also in um. Um, how it will likely be administered later on. And then, of course, um currently the city's without a city manager. So we're open to further direction. Um, I don't know if um. I don't think anyone's in a position to have a even a preliminary discussion. Tonight, other than to do what you did in August, which is to confirm that. Um, council is generally supportive of. Implementing collective bargaining, but just hasn't to date been in a position to to pull um. A specific ordinance together. Um, back in ordinance, we talked about the fact that back in August, we talked about the fact that in. The Northern Virginia localities, um. Um, many of them had been working on their ordinances for quite some period of time with with. Input from a lot of sources and also with uh some amount of budget. Budgetary planning and planning for additional staff in uh their human resources department to to implement things once. An ordinance got adopted. So. Right now, we're in sort of um. I don't know if catch twenty-two is is the right phrase for it, but we're just in a place where. A major policy initiative. Like this is just very difficult to 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 launch right at this point.
All right, thank you. Counselors, um. Questions, comments?
Yes, um. Just a couple of comments, um. I mean, definitely still support it and want to see it happen. Um. Recognizing like with with everything, it's a lot harder when there's no uh. City manager or human resources director, particularly for this. Um, but again, definitely still supportive when I see it happen. For me, the goal would to. Be to try to one, get a sense of what kind of bullet budget allocation we would need to make um. By the end of this year's budget process, just so we're able to actually do that and try to have the goal of still getting it done um for the upcoming. Fiscal year to not push it back, you know, a whole nother year. Um, and then the only other comment I I would have is just, I know. I forget what, but one of the Northern Virginia localities used a consultant and they paid them a ton of money, went through months and they ended up just chucking the work of the consultant. Um, and that we not repeat that because I do know there's a number of consulting firms. Um, who sort of industry is explicitly trying to either. Water down or stop um unionization and collective bargaining agreements and just that we. Not go down that road because one, I don't think it's our policy goal and two, I think we would just end up in a situation where we actually end up just. Spending more money than we need to and shut the plant at the end, just like that other locality in Northern Virginia.
And I would just say that my position remains as it was in August. This is something we absolutely need to be exploring and and determining what resources are needed to do that exploration.
All right.
Same for me. No, no change in my position.
And I um. Still think that this is important, wish more progress had been made. Understand the challenges there and hope that we can feel. Both of those positions. And speaking of both those positions, there hasn't been an um. a change in where we are in the city manager process. So I just, so we didn't talk about that today, but I want to make sure that the public understands that. But hopefully, we can fill that those two positions. HR is very important for the work we need to do in terms of internal compression compensation issues and adding, you know, this on. And I think if we were doing those things better in the first place, as I've said before, that we would have less need for things like this. So a HR director doing a lot of the work that we need to change that department is going to be vital for any of this stuff to succeed.
So if I could ask just a couple of clarifying questions, just to direct us for going forward. One key question is, is there a larger sentiment to what council paying somewhat suggested there that you are not interested in a consultant and you'd rather this be directed by an HR director? Is that more the sentiment? I mean, I think that helps guide us on if our priority is to pursue the HR director first or to go after a consulting firm that can help inform this conversation.
I think it would depend, you know, what we had hoped would occur with if the city manager that we thought would be the city manager, that his expertise would maybe shift where what was needed from the city. If we hire an HR director with experience with, and we may have less need for a consultant, I think we should keep it open because we don't know what our needs are. If we don't need a consultant, we should never pay a consultant for anything if we have the expertise on staff or if it's better for us to hire that position, hire that, you know, individual with that expertise.
And without that expertise, if we were to have to go the route of utilizing a consultant, one of the key questions is, how big a scope are we looking at? We would need to begin to identify how many units we're even open to permitting or organizing. Have we had any discussion on that, which departments, how many, so we can identify how many staff potentially? All that's going to factor into the work that they have to do.
Yeah, I think that's why we, for me, that's why we would need a proposal. I'm going to be less restrictive on who can benefit from this, especially when there are so many other challenges to this being taken care of in-house for them. So if we're going to allow it, I think that that's something we should know what it means. Like who wants us to consider this? And we should have those discussions, even if it's a where we start discussion.
Yeah, and I would echo, I would think it would be looking at the city as a whole. And again, on the, and I recognize we're in a very unique position, not having a city manager, HR director. The biggest concern I have is with the consultant is they're just our firms who are known for explicitly entering into this work to both either water down or divert efforts of employees to collectively bargain and unionize. And I think if we pick a firm who's sort of in that industry and it is an industry, as that, like forgetting which locality in Northern Virginia did, I think we'll just have ended up wasting time and money and not made the most prudent choice.
You all did make it clear, I think, in the resolution you adopted in August, that you're open to this, you're interested in it. And that the purpose of seeking outside help is to get an experienced person's assistance analyzing the several different ordinances now that you have as examples and trying to figure out which is best for Charlottesville. So it would be important if you're using outside services to be clear with people that you've expressed an interest in moving forward with it. It's, you know, that piece is settled. And I don't know whether that particular Northern Virginia jurisdiction didn't have a clear direction in that regard as they were starting out or what. But you all have certainly said in your resolution that you are open and interested in it and you would like to review the ordinances that people are sending you as well as Alexandria's ordinance and other examples that may be available.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. Any other business items for consideration? All right, and questions for city management follow-up? One question that I did have is there an update on the police chief and what is happening there? And is that something that we can get tonight or do you need? Tell the 20.
I don't think that staff is ready to address that tonight. Again, we obviously would have preferred to be here tonight with a city manager, an interim city manager in the seats. That is another key position that the city needs to make plans to fill. But I don't think staff's ready to address how that search is going to take place tonight.
So at this point, we still just have an interim person in the role?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right. And I think that's what I was asking, because that's what's been asked and I just haven't known what the answer is.
Yeah.
All right, any other follow-up questions to management? All right, so we'll open the matters by the public.
I'd like to speak to council at this time. Please click the raise hand icon in your Zoom webinar. If you're joining us via telephone, press star nine. Each speaker will get three minutes. And please state your name and place of residence when you begin speaking. Kristin Sekos. You're on with council. Can you hear us?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening or maybe almost good morning. My name is Kristin Sekus. I live in the city and I'm a former member of the Charlottesville City Council and have had these discussions there myself. And I know it's late, but I'm speaking to plead with you to reconsider your decision to delay the vote on the Confederate statues tonight and to please vote tonight for award B to the Jefferson School and Mr. Jackson's LAX museum. You have the information you need to make these decisions tonight. You can vote on the LAX proposal contingent on the museum's willingness to take just one statue, arguably the one with more artistic merit. The museum is the only organization that offered anything other than glorification of lost cause for that statue. You know you're not going to vote for something else. And delaying the vote on the Lee statue is only going to invite conflict and dissension in the next two weeks without any reason. You all support awarding the Lee statue to the Jefferson School African American Heritage. This trusted local organization plans to transform this century-old mining, century-old mining that provides supremacy through robust community engagement into new art that upholds positive community values. Through the Swords and the Plowshares project, the city of Charlottesville has the chance to lead the nation in showing how these harmful symbols of the Confederacy can help spread healing and hope to the community instead. Please don't make us wait. Thank you for your attention and I hope to be able to celebrate tonight that the city did the right thing.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ramona Martinez. Martinez, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much, council members. My name is Ramona Martinez. I'm a local artist here in Charlottesville and a board member of the Bridge Progressive Arts Initiative. I've been a part of the Planning Committee of Swords into Plowshares since its inception. And I just wanted to assure council that we have done our homework as far as the bronze is concerned and that our proposal to create new works of art out of the remnants of the Lee statue is viable. I also want to urge council not to delay this vote until next meeting because figuring out how big of a monetary gift this would be to the Jefferson School simply does not matter, especially when you consider what it entails. Because the Jefferson School proposal is the only proposal that would transform these statues from symbols of oppression into symbols of progress and resilience. And not to mention, they would be giving a gift of new art back to the city. I think that selecting the Jefferson School tonight to transform the statue is more than just a significant step towards healing because we, our societies are understood by their poetry and their music and their art. And you'd be voting on how future generations will know us. And so as an artist and a community member, I sincerely hope Charlottesville gets the opportunity to remind the world once again about the power that these statues can have. And I know that y'all know that this is the right thing to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Dukes. Does Dukes can hear us?
Yes. I simply want to echo the two previous speakers' points of view and urge you to reconsider and vote tonight on the Confederate statues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dawn Gathers. Mr. Gathers, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you again. Excuse me, apologize. I'm just wondering, how long do you all want to make this community wait? How much more do you want to drag out the trauma that these statues represent? The kicking this can down the road is akin to a former counselor's vote of abstention when this first came up. This, we're not going to move anywhere on this. Go ahead and bring this thing up to a vote. Let's put it up, put it down, but let's not stress this out any longer. I just don't understand what the weight or the stolen tactics or the delay is expected to accomplish. Let's go ahead and get this done. It's already midnight. What will another five, 10 minutes cost? I mean, let's, and on the question of cost, I don't think that we can attach a dollar figure to what the Jefferson School has meant to this city and this community and this state if you want to look back over the history. So I don't think that we need to be concerned about how big a gift that we would be ceding to them. Let's go ahead and get this done, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lena Seville. Seville, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you and obviously you can hear me. You answered. So Lena Seville, city resident. I also urge you to reconsider voting on the Lee statue tonight. I don't think there's any other viable solution. I feel like this is just putting stumbling blocks in the way and dragging things out. If you vote on the Lee statue tonight, then you can spend your time with the other considerations for the other two statues. But it doesn't seem like there's any other serious consideration for the Lee statue. So it seems like it would be best to just get that done. And I urge you to please do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Cavett. Mr. Cavett, can you hear us?
I should do, I should be able to now. I'm a realist, realist. I know that you are probably going to recommend the housing on Nassau Street, but you should not. None of the houses should have been approved in the first place. It's in a flood zone. It's definitely in a flood zone. The Army Corps of Engineers recommended to the city, six, I'm sorry, 50 years ago, not to build in this area. The county listened to the recommendation, but not the city. I spoke to council member Michael Payne when he was running for council and he told me that he recommended to Habitat not to build in that area. There is documented history of flood events in that area, pictures of boats going up and down Nassau Street in 69. It's foolish to be building in that area, especially with climate change, the issue becoming even more acute. Today, I asked two people that I saw that lived in the Habitat housing, if they knew they were in a flood plain. They told me no. Mr. Snook, you were right about the issue as far as building up and on a flood plain. You do move the water more into the channel and it doesn't have a place to spread. This has been an issue on the Mississippi River with causing flooding because the water doesn't have any place to go. Water, just for your knowledge, water flows from down, flood from Camille, the water flowed down 29 south, down Morse Creek into the city, which causes then the major flooding that we had. Justin was correct in that the water does back up, but it also is coming down 29 at the same time. If it has not been done, there should be an emergency evacuation plan for that area for the people that are already living there. Let's not forget that most of those people that live in that area are lower income and very susceptible to anything that may affect their income. I have a question that I probably going to be hearing some people give me some feedback on. But I have a question I'd like to ask you all to think about. If you knew you could be held responsible for the involuntary manslaughter, what would your vote for that development for that area be? You got to remember, your vote could put people's lives in jeopardy. That's all I have to say. I got a few more seconds about, so I'll say something about the monuments. I think we need to really be careful about destroying works of art, unless it's really, really outrageous. It amounts to me doing the same thing would be burning books. So I don't feel that we should be burning, melting down statues or burning books. So my time's up, so that's all I have to say for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more speakers. Just do one last call for. All right.
Ang Kong, Colin? Can you hear us? Need to mute your microphone.
Okay, yes. Hi, Ang Khan from the city of Charlottesville. Let's see. So I'm speaking in my individual capacity. Tonight's conversation around these statues had so many Colin Hager talking points, I could barely keep up. I will say this, there's no bargaining when it comes to white supremacy. There's nothing that will undo the generational harm and trauma. But there's one thing that you all currently can have the power to do right now. And that's to honor the request of both Indigenous and Black descendants in our community. The only people or group who should have any say or any type of compensation from these statues are the impacted communities. So I urge you to make the vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there are no additional hands, but we'll close the matters by the public. Counselors, any comments, any will to vote tonight on the Lee statue?
Vote on the Lee statue tonight. I view it as either it's going to happen tonight or next meeting. So I'm happy to vote on it tonight and just get it done with.
I'm not opposed. I just thought that we'd have all of them. Just, I thought it would be nice to kind of do all these things at once. And I also thought it would be nice to have all five counselors here at once to do it. But if there's a will to do this tonight and we cannot wait, I don't think that it's going to change the outcome whether we wait or not, but obviously some people have that concern. But I'm just sorry that we don't have all five of us here.
So is there a resolution?
I don't have one in front of me, but.
You have some specific language, I think.
I know we were sent those earlier today. I don't have mine handy.
So there's a motion to be sent. I move that we adopt the resolution by the council of the city of Charlottesville to the ownership of the statue of General Robert E. Lee is hereby conveyed to the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center in return for the month. Is transferred to the Jefferson School, a charitable institutional organization in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Code, section 15.2-953, and this disposition is final.
Lisa, that's Ms. Robertson, that works. Do we need to add anything else?
No, you may just want to clarify that it is a donation.
I'm sorry, I started the first one, and I apologize. I'll do it again. The resolve by the council of the city of Charlottesville, the statue of Robert E. Lee, hereby donated and ownership transferred the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center a charitable institutional organization in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Code, section 15.2-953. This disposition is final.
That's fine.
Apologies.
Did you, Michael? And I just have one question in terms of it can stay on property where it's currently at until they are ready to do the, okay. All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snell?
Yes.
That carries for zero. Thank you all for that. And is there any other comments or questions? All right. Have a good evening. Adorned.
Thank you, staff.
Thanks. Have a good.